So far, so quickly.
Want to check my email? To see if Sean wrote. And maybe he sent something in and we didn't get it.
Usually, the other way around, not going out, instead of not going in.
This conference will now be recorded.
Ready? And did you know how to share your screen for the agenda and stuff?
Right here?
Yes, but you have, do you have the agenda open yet?
I gotta pull it up. Share my screen.
Let me know when we're ready to go.
Just, um, open up the agenda for, you can just click on, well, it's gonna want to do the clean screen.
Hold on for a second.
This one?
Yeah. And then if you use the two arrows, the double arrows, it'll minimize that a little bit, so you don't see.
This here?
Yeah. And, well, you can minimize it again. Because otherwise, if you push the, uh, double arrows above the microphone. There you go.
Ah, there we go. Okay, Steve, we're ready.
Okay, um, a called order, the City of Escalon Planning Commission meeting of March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, at six thirty-three.
Correction, March ninth.
March ninth. What did I say?
Nineteenth.
We have a flag salute, please. I pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which has. One nation, under God. Individual with liberty and justice. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Stroman? Commissioner Sarkozy?
Here.
Commissioner Danziger?
Here.
Commissioner Willis?
Here.
Commissioner Castellanos?
Here. Um, I'm gonna make a couple of announcements. Uh, one is that all cell phones, pager of similar devices, need to be set on silent or vibrate mode, or turned off unless you are an on-duty emergency responder. Also, the city chambers are open to the public during pub, planning commission meetings with social distance measures and mask requirements in the place. Due to the occupancy and seating limitations, member of the public are encouraged to participate in the meeting via go-to-meeting venue. There are some options, if you would like to, uh, be at the meeting, but do it via, um, the go-to-meeting, you can either watch it on a YouTube, or, uh, watch it, or call in. Anything else there?
No, you're good to go to consent.
Do we have anybody from the audience listening, or, uh, watching this on the go-to? Looks like I see seven people. That have signed in. Do we have, uh, the consent calendar? Approved the minutes from the meeting of January twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one? Does everybody have an opportunity to look it over, make comments?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept them, uh, the minutes.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Call in to favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Repose. Motion carried for. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider the following. Application twenty-one, seven forty-one. The property address is fifteen twenty-eight Roosevelt Avenue. Is a request for a variance. Could I have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, a little background and overview, the applicant came before the planning commission in January, appealing the city's interpretation of the municipal code related to fencing and yard setback requirements. Upon review of the appeal, the planning commission rejected the applicant's appeal, making their fencing subject to the Escalon Municipal Code requirements. The actions of the planning commission began a ten-day appeal period during which the commission's actions could have been appealed to the city council, which expired at five PM on Wednesday, January twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. After this period expired, the applicant would become, uh, subject to the commission's actions, which required they install or relocate the fence in accordance with, uh, Escalon Municipal Code seventeen point four one zero three zero B. In lieu of an appeal and prior to the closing of the appeal period, the applicant submitted their application for a variance on the fencing. Um, a little background information that we've already reviewed with you at the last meeting, and we did include it in the staff report as a refresher, um, but I'm going to skip over to the bottom of page three, kind of picking up where this would lead off. With everything that's gone on, um, at that property with the fencing, um, there is inactive, uh, demand to cease and desist, uh, fence installation at fifteen twenty-eight Roosevelt Avenue, which was issued back in October of two thousand and twenty. After the cease and desist letter was issued and before the appeal hearing was conducted, the applicant did add an additional fence post and completed the fencing along First Street, which encroaches into the fifteen-foot setback with a side gate. Uh, code enforcement actions have remained paused on these activities, and were originally dependent on the outcome of the appeal hearing back in January, but are now pending planning commission's action on this variance application. So the variance request, um, the applicant's statement in support of a variance, which is exhibit A in this item, uh, requests roughly a ten-foot variance on Roosevelt Avenue and a five-foot variance on First Street. To maintain the fence where it is currently installed, staff believes they are actually requesting for a four-foot variance on Roosevelt, uh, because the fence is located eleven feet behind future sidewalk, and an eight-foot, ten-inch variance on First Street, because the current fence is located six feet, two inches behind future sidewalk. These are the measurements that were documented by the city engineer. Um, the applicant then provides their argument and reasoning to why a variance, uh, request should be approved. The applicant states that their property being surrounded by other properties on either Roosevelt Avenue or First Street that are not subject to the same setback requirements that have been applied to their property is a special circumstance. In short, the applicant's reasoning for the variance is as follows. Uh, since the other properties in the area do not have the setback, their property should not be required to have that setback either. As explained in EMC seventeen point five seven zero one zero, variances are intended to resolve practical difficulties or unusual physical hardships that may result from the size, shape, or dimensions of a site, or the location of existing structures thereon from geographic, topographic, or other physical conditions on the site, or in the immediate vicinity, or from street locations or traffic conditions in the immediate vicinity of the site, or if the strict application of this title would deprive such property of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity under identical zone classification. EMC seven five seven point zero one zero further states that such a variance shall be subject to the conditions, as will assure that the adjustment thereby authorized shall not constitute a grant of special privilege, inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties in the vicinity and zone in which the property is situated. Upon application in proper form, such variances may be granted, as will not be contrary to the general purpose of this title or the public interest. The following findings are required by the commission to approve a variance pursuant to Escalon Municipal Code seventeen point five seven zero three zero. A, that there are special circumstances applicable to the subject property or to the intended case, which do not generally apply to other properties in the same vicinity and under identical zone classifications. B, that the ses, the special circumstance relate to the property or use, not the financial or other personal condition of the applicant, nor to any self-imposed condition on the property that is a result of actions taken by the present owner or his predecessor. C, that the granting of the variance shall not constitute a grant of special privilege, inconsistent with the limitations upon other property in the vicinity and the same zoning classification. And D, that the result would not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity. So we go through A, and staff provides an analysis that the application does not describe any special circumstances applicable to the property itself. The application does not describe any characteristics of the property, unique or otherwise, that may create a special circumstance or may necessitate a variance. All of the properties provided by the applicant as examples are either existing or non-conforming uses, with exception to the former Escalon lumberyard properties. The lumberyard properties currently under construction are in accordance with the municipal code requirements for the community commercial, otherwise known as C-two zoning dis, district. All new development in the city is subject to current municipal code regulations. If any of these properties moved forward with installing a fence, hedge, or wall, or replacing of existing fencing, the current municipal code requirements would be applied, and they would need to apply for a variance on the setback regulations if they were interested in placing the fence in a different location than what the municipal code allows. Buildings are not subject to the setback requirements for fences, hedges, and walls. The C-two zoning district has no setback requirements for buildings, which is in, uh, municipal code section one seven point one nine zero four zero C. For letter B, which was the special circumstances relate to the property or use, not the financial or other personal condition of the applicant, nor any self-imposed condition on the property that is a result of actions taken by the present owner or predecessor. The applicant states that the spec, special circumstances are the existing improvements up and down both sides of Roosevelt Avenue and First Street, which bear little or no resemblance to the setback requirements being imposed on the applicant's property. They've, they respond further that there is virtually no property on the entirety of Roosevelt Avenue or First Street, which have improvements at least fifteen feet from the rear of any existing or future sidewalks. Staff's analysis, staff reiterates that all new development in the city is subject to the current municipal code regulations. All of the properties along Roosevelt Avenue and First Street are either existing or non-conforming uses, with the exception of the lumberyard. The lumberyard properties are under current, uh, construction, and their construction is in accordance with the municipal code for that zoning district. Uh, once again, if any of these properties move forward with installing a fence or replacing existing fencing, the current municipal code requirements would apply, and they would need to apply for a variance on setback regulations if they were interested in placing a fence in a different location other than what the, uh, municipal code allows. Again, buildings are not subject to setback requirements for fences, hedges, and walls. The C-two zoning district has no setback requirements for buildings. As seen along Main Street, the buildings are mostly constructed on the property line with parking on the street or in the back. This is a common practice for commercial business district areas of cities and towns, intended to provide a, uh, provide a cozy atmosphere and continuous streetscape for the customers of all the businesses in the area. It also places businesses out front on the street, which serves as direct advertisement appealing to the cars and people that may come through the area. For letter C, that granting of a variance shall not constitute a grant of special privilege, inconsistent with the limitations upon other property in the vicinity and same zone classification. The applicant states that granting the variance request would not be a grant of special privilege because the current location of the installed fence and posts represents a setback which is equal or greater to than in any of these surrounding properties. Applicant again compares the surrounding properties to their property, arguing that prior zoning and past project approvals and municipal code requirements should be made available to their property because their neighbors have them. Staff analysis, many of the structures along Roosevelt Avenue were constructed prior to incorporation of the city in nineteen fifty-seven, and thus were not subject to early municipal code requ, requirements. At some point in time, the zoning of this area of the city and the setback requirements for fences, hedges, and walls was updated to reflect what the city's long-term visions were in both the commercial and residential zoning districts. Staff's job is to enforce that these visions are met via application of the municipal code requirements. As indicated in the responses to both A and B, all new development in the city is subject to the, the current municipal code regulations. The properties currently under development as commercial are to city standards for commercial areas. The residences along Roosevelt Avenue are non-conforming status, but are zoned as commercial for future planning prop, uh, purposes. When redeveloped, or if a new development occurs at these locations, the property owners will be required to meet the current municipal code requirements. Letter D, that the result would not be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare, or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity. The applicant states that there would be no detriment to public health, safety, or welfare, or be, uh, materially injurious to properties or improvements in the area, as the setback imposed on the applicant is more restrictive compared to all the other properties on Roosevelt Avenue and First Street. The applicant acknowledges that the surrounding properties may have been pre-current code requirements, and that if their location represented a detriment to s, health, safety, or welfare of the community, that it would be addressed by the city. Therefore, the same, for the same reason, the applicant argues that a fence that is already setback as far or farther than all of the other surrounding properties on Roosevelt Avenue and First Street cannot, uh, be materially injurious or prop, uh, to properties or improvements in the vicinity. Staff's analysis, the city does not foresee that the variance would be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare, or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity. However, staff wants to highlight that it treats all applicants and citizens the same by enforcing the municipal code where it is required. The applicant points to its surrounding properties, most of them constructed many years ago, and argues that the property which remains undeveloped should be entitled to pass code requirements that have since been updated, because everyone else was. These properties at some time during their development went through a review process and had their improvements improved as a part of their, uh, project development application, or were not subject to certain requirements at the time that they developed. Cities and row and, and progress over the years. As indicated in C, the zoning of this area of the city and setback requirements for fences, hedges, and walls was updated to reflect the city's long-term visions, um, in both the commercial and residential zoning districts. The city does its best to ensure that all new development and fencing installed in the city meets the municipal code requirements in place at the time they are developed. A summary of the analysis, overall, the applicant provides the same reasoning for each of the findings required for variances. All of the properties around them are not subject to the requirements, so their project should not, uh, so their property should not be subjected to the pro, uh, requirements. However, all of the surrounding properties went through their development process at some time and are either constructed prior to city incorporation, non-conforming, or existing. Future development of those properties will trigger current municipal code requirements to be applied to their improvements. The city, including the city engineer, does not agree with the applicant's comparison of building setbacks to fencing setbacks. As previously explained, the commercial zoning district has no setback requirements for buildings. Building setbacks also have a smaller footprint and are not continuous along a road right-of-way, as a fence would be. Therefore, the applicant's arguments for finding A through C are not relative. For public outreach, a public hearing notice was published in the Escalon Times on February twenty-fourth. On February twenty-sixth, the notice for the public hearing was mailed to every property owner and occupant within three hundred feet. As noted, as on the latest assessor's records, staff did not receive any responses from the public hearing notice. Responses received by other departments are attached to the staff report or incorporated into the conditions of approval. Um, and since the publication of the staff report, uh, staff did receive one comment. Uh, we did print out a copy to pass to each of the commissioners. Um, the letter is, is from the neighboring property, um, Shanlar Enterprises, and it does, uh, support the recommendation of, of staff at this time, which is to deny the, uh, the application of the variance. Um, so if you needed some time to review that, it's lengthy, I do have copies of it, so I wasn't intending to read it all. I think I put one at Sean's desk. Um, the planning commission's decision will begin a ten-business-day appeal period, which the commission's actions may be appealed to city council or called up to council by a council member, which would expire at five PM on March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one. If approved, and there is no appeal filed within that period, the applicant may proceed with the project. If denied and no appeal is filed, the decision of the planning commission is final. The current cost to file an appeal is six hundred and forty-five dollars. Staff did review comments received from agencies and put together the following items to serve as proposed conditions of approval. The planning commission should review the project to make modifications of the conditions of approval as needed. Based on the findings required for a variance, staff recommends that the planning commission deny the variance request, as it does not meet the findings required for approval under the municipal code seventeen point five seven zero three zero. So the planning commission should take the following steps in moving forward with the appeal. One, you open the public hearing and take any public testimony on the application. Two, close the public hearing. Three, discuss and vote on the variance. If the variance is granted, there's a, a few other items that would need to be done. Four would be make the findings as required per section seventeen point five seven zero three zero for variances. Five, find the project SEQA Class Three categorically exempt under section one five three oh three E, which is new construction of accessory structures, including fencing, and authorize staff to file the SEQA notice of exemption. Six, approve the application with conditions of approval as proposed below or as modified with the planning commission. And then below the specific conditions would be approval, um, with letter A being the four-foot variance on the setback along First Street, allowing the fence to be set at eleven feet behind the sidewalk, and B, an eight-foot, ten-inch variance on the s, on the fence setback along Roosevelt Avenue, which allows the fence to be set six feet, two inches behind the sidewalk. As described earlier, uh, by staff, um, these, these were where the fence is currently existing. Um, it was written in their, their letter of support a little differently, and so we had updated it to reflect that variance, and so if that is incorrect and the applicant wants something more, when they have, when they come up, they can clarify that for us if this is incorrect, um, and we can update that. Um, and then all the other standards of conditions that are listed are, are more of our general, uh, template language, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and we do have, uh, the applicant, um, and their legal counsel in the, in the, uh, audience.
Does any of the commissioners have questions for staff?
Uh, let them go in an order, uh, Steve, so we don't talk over each other.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, okay, Kurt, since you spoke up first, you're, you're, you're ahead.
Yeah, I just have a question, uh, for staff. Uh, ha, are, is anyone in the city required to fence a vacant lot?
There are no fencing requirements. For any, any lots at all, there's no fencing requirements at all.
Okay, a, and so substantially, i- if I'm reading this right, uh, not much has changed since the last time this issue was brought to us?
Uh, no. I should re, restate that, there are fencing requirements when you decide to put up a fence, but there's no language in the municipal code that requires anybody to have a fence.
Okay, um, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Barbara, do you have any questions for staff?
No questions at this time.
John?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair, my apologies to, uh, my fellow commissioners and to city staff and to our constituents in the audience for my attendance, or my arrival late. Uh, two words, Bay Area, and I'll just leave it at that. So, I do have one question, Mr. Chair, for, uh, the staff, um, and that is, can you please clarify for my own education the difference in the appeal that we dealt with in January and the process that we're going through this evening? Uh, and the differences between the two?
So the appeal, um, was at staff's determination, which at that time, staff or the city made a determination and advised the applicant, um, that this is how the municipal code was interpreted, this is how, it, how, this is how it's applied. These, these are the restrictions or regulations placed on the fencing. There was an option to, to apply for a variance at that time. Um, that's typically what's, what is proposed or recommended. If you want to do something differently, you would come to planning commission for the variance. They decided to move forward with an appeal because they believed that staff was interpreting the code differently, so that was the process that they, that they went through was an appeal. So when the appeal is, is done, it's, it's basically the yes or no with planning commission, and then if there's no appeal filed on the appeal, then it would, the, the applicant would be subject to whatever the planning commission's decision was at that time. So instead of allowing the appeal to expire, they decided to apply for the variance instead, which allows the planning commission, um, to provide that flexibility for the, um, variance that they are requesting, but subject to making findings in accordance with the municipal code for those letters A, B, C, and D. And I don't know if you have any additional feedback that you think I missed out on, Diana?
No, that sounded right.
And, I'm sorry, one other question. So if the variance is denied, and the Coleman's appeal to the city council, if the city council denies the variance, what are the next steps after that?
So if it's a P, if, if, if the planning commission denies the appeal, and the applicant or member of the council appeals it to plan, or appeals it to city council, and it's voted on and it's denied, then it's final. But if they vote on it and reject the planning commission's decision and it's approved, then that would be final.
Okay, so ultimately.
Ultimately, the city council has the final say, if it, if it moves to that level.
City process, yeah.
In the city process, correct.
Okay. No other questions, Mr. Chair?
Okay, I, I have a question for staff. When somebody comes in for a variance, they're usually asking to do something that doesn't fit the zoning code or whatever. Is it, is it typical that, uh, they come in for a variance on something that they've already constructed? Or is it usually a proposed, something proposed that they come in and request a variance to move forward?
Honestly, we do see it both ways, it just depends on where, where it's caught in the situation. The people who come in and inquire usually about what the restrictions are, and they're advised that, that there are certain regulations, and they don't agree with those reg, regulations, or would like to have a lesser regulation usually. We give them that variance process, um, and then if they want to move forward with it, they would apply for that variance process. But we do have applicants that apply after the fact, if they've already done something and it comes to city's attention that it wasn't done in municipal code requirements. We would typically advise them that they need to, to come to the planning commission to have it approved. That way, it's documented and, and runs with the property that it's been there, um, in their, in their address file, so. So you can see it either way.
Okay, and then I have a, another question, and this is on the, um, municipal code or zoning code under chapter seventeen dash nineteen, oh, forty, development standards. It looks like if there's a structure, there is no setback requirements on the. there is no setback requirements on the front.
That is correct.
That's correct, okay.
Yes, and that is typically what is seen in cities in their commercial zoning districts or their business districts. That's why you see like Main Street, as indicated in the staff report, and even some of the buildings along First Street, where the... The... All dalled up was, and the Magnuson and Mize Building, the Escalon Transmission, there we go. Those buildings are... They might be separate owners and they look like they're all one building, but they're actually all separate buildings that are built to zero lot setbacks. And so they're basically just barely on top of each other. And in that point, typically, the first person that puts the wall up, you know, gets that full zero lot line. And then the next person that comes in, with building code regulations now, maybe not necessarily 20, 30, 40, 50 years ago, they would have some type of fire rating requirement because there's already a building there that their building would have the fire rating to prevent their building from catching fire to the other building. So, but that is a... That's a common practice typically in business districts.
Okay, and then my last question is, the former lumberyard that's now being constructed by Grassi, the metal building that is fronts Roosevelt, how far is that building from the proposed sidewalk that's going to be going in?
I think there's a picture of that.
Is it pretty much at the property line, budding up to the sidewalk? Is there some...
About two feet.
Yeah.
About two feet, okay. Okay, but in theory, they could have gone right to the property line, correct?
In theory, correct.
Okay. I have no other questions.
Commissioner Sarkozy has a question.
Okay.
Didn't you?
No, no questions at this point, thank you. But thank you for asking.
I didn't know, I thought we were missing one person.
You were, Mr. Chair, it was me, the latecomer.
Okay, well, unfortunately, I can see Kurt's name and I can't see anybody in the council. And I... There's a bunch of... You know, I don't know who's there, so I apologize.
The gang is all here, sir.
I'd like to open up the public hearing. I would like people to come up and state their name and present arguments either for or against the project. What I would like to ask is if we can limit the presentation to five minutes, if that is possible? And could I get somebody on staff to just kind of be the timekeeper on that?
Sure.
Okay. So I'll open up the public hearing. When you come to the podium or you're on the phone, just state your name. Is there anybody in favor or against this project?
Oh, yeah.
The applicant's coming up right now.
Okay.
Pardon me, every time I take my mask off, my hearing aids come out. Is there ever a time when you got a building setback in C2? Ever?
No, I mean, not currently.
Sir, for the record, could you announce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Brett Dickerson. I'm the attorney for the Coleman's. Pardon me drinking the water, I'm having a horrible time with my hay fever today. So no disrespect intended.
Building setbacks in C2 or C-0? There is some landscaping that could be required.
What happens when the C2 is across the street or abuts residential zoning?
That's where they have a setback? Is it 20 or 10?
While they're looking that up, that had to do with like one of the letters that came in. I guess it was from your engineer, where you asked if there's any engineering issues. But he mentioned that there's no setback requirements ever in C2 zoning. I'm not sure if that's correct, but that's why I'm asking. He also mentioned a footprint created by a fence. That's the first time in 25 years as a lawyer and 33 years as a real estate broker I've ever heard footprint applied to a fence. But you learn something every day. Folks, I'm not going to say much here tonight because we said it all last week or a month ago or two months ago, whenever it was. Basically, what she said was correct. Everything around there doesn't even come close to having this kind of a setback. If you look at an aerial photograph of Roosevelt in first, it looks like somebody chewed up a bunch of pictures of houses and front yards and buildings and spit them on a piece of paper. There's absolutely no rhyme or reason to any of it, which is fine. It all happened. The point we're trying to make is, what is the sin of having that last piece going down Roosevelt have the setback not be so far as everybody else's? I know that everybody here is mad because Coleman put those posts in. I mean, the last time when the arguments were going on and people were discussing it among themselves, I had to listen to people preface their decisions with, "Well, we know the history of the Coleman's. We know what we've had to do with the Coleman's." I had to have people say how unsightly the fencing was. Good God, cyclone fencing was slats, disregarding the fact that you got about an eighth of a mile of the stuff running south on the other side of the tracks. What is suddenly this obsession with making sure the Coleman's follow this to the letter of the law? Granted, I understand he put them in the wrong place. He missed it by eight feet. I don't know if you're aware of it, but since that cease and desist order came out, we found out that the city was off 18 inches in where they put the post. They were wrong. What would have happened if the Coleman's had put that post and their fence in the previous location and then found out it was 18 inches too far back off the street? Would the city have picked up the charge for that? I don't think so. And what's interesting about all of this is when I asked the city about that, "Where's this 18 inches coming from?" Here's the response I get. "There was a change in the placement of the curb alignment based on the improvement plans for the neighbor property." I'd been led to believe it took an act of God to move any of that stuff. And now it turns out, all it took was the neighbors' improvements and the Red Sea parted. And then you wonder why these people sitting here think that maybe there is not equitable enforcement of these rules. I know that when I say that, everybody recoils, like I've accused you people of, you know, selling porn and cocaine. But this is why they feel that way. From your staff, we don't really care that they moved it. My response to this was to err as human, to forgive divine. But my client, somebody that hauls steel for a living, missed it by eight feet. The city engineers with access to all of their equipment, all of their expertise and all of their maps missed it by 18 inches. I worked as a surveyor in my youth. That is a big error. That's a big error. You wouldn't keep your job as a party chief very long making mistakes like that. And all we can think about is, well, he put them in the wrong place. She stepped off the distance. She stepped off 33 feet or 23 feet from the edge. Thought it was good. No, it had to be over here. This is where it goes. Oh, two months later, sorry, it's wrong. You missed it. So that's all we're trying to do here. I don't hold out a lot of hope, to be honest with you. Given what I listened to last time and the animosity that people clearly feel towards these people, I'm getting ready to appeal to the city council. And by the way, I haven't looked into this a whole lot. I don't think the city council is the last step. I think Arida Mandamus is the last step. So I think there's one step beyond that. Has anybody found out what the zoning is?
It's up on the screen, yes.
So there are minimum setbacks for the development standards in C2. Letter C is the minimum setbacks for the front is none, side is none, rear is none. And then there are minimum yard requirements applied along property lines of the C2 zone, which abut or cross the street... Of the street or alley from a lot in a residential zone.
Yeah, you want to know what else that applies to? We talked about that the last time. Fencing setbacks. There's no fencing setbacks unless you have that. If you are abutting or facing residential zoning, you got a fencing zoning, you got a fencing setback. I've never heard anything that's said otherwise. Still haven't. Of course, I was accused of being disingenuous last time. I'm sure everybody knows what that means. It's a nice word for being deceptive. That's a word lawyers throw around a lot, it makes us feel good. I just look at this and it seems as though what's taking place here is the elevation of form over substance. The last property out there with properties and property lines and fences and buildings scattered everywhere. And suddenly, we've got to have that fence 15 feet back. It's not an anomaly back there, it's an aberration. It's so far removed from anything else. And that's all we want to do. They put the posts up, put them in the wrong place. There seems to be an obsession to punish them by making them pull them out of the ground. Obviously, people are unhappy about that. They're unhappy about the type of fence they chose. But for whatever it is, there seems to be a heck of a dissonance between what's going on with them and what's going on with other properties. I got a copy of the letter that came from Mr. Grassi's counsel. Six pages. Six pages from a neighbor opposing a variance. How do you come up with six pages worth? And my guess is it'll be given a lot of significance. I don't know, it just seems like the commonsensical thing to do. They've already been taken to task the last time because they put posts up in the wrong place. We now find the city didn't even know where they were supposed to go. Is asking a variance so that they're not sitting back 10 feet, 15 feet beyond everybody else up and down First Street and up and down Roosevelt? Too much to ask? It just seems to be common sense to me. I'm going to reserve a minute or so of my time so I can respond to what somebody else may come up here and say.
One point, the question you had, it has to do with a residential zone, and that's not a residential zone. So what you brought up doesn't apply in this...
Absolutely, it applies because...
It's commercial.
No, 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 no. What I'm saying is, is that as with fencing setbacks, there is no setback so long as you are not abutting or across the street from residential zoning. It's right up there in number four.
I know, but this isn't a residential zone.
Exactly, and that's why we didn't need a fencing setback because we're not across the street from residential zoning. The residential zoning setbacks for... The fencing setbacks is in a required front yard. What's a required front yard? The only time that you deal with required front yards is when you're dealing with a property that abuts or is across the street from residential zoning. The same principles that keep Mr. Grassi from having to set back his buildings is the same principle under your own code that means that the Coleman's don't have to set a fence back. I raised that the last time I was here, and not a single opposing code section was given to me. What they fell back on was the old saw. That's the way we've always done it. That supports our position. As I said, I'm going to reserve some time, thank you.
Hi, Stacy Coleman. Lone Tree Road, Escalon. I just want to make one brief comment. Dominique brought up the paragraph at page three of 10 and pointed out that we, after the cease and desist letter, we added a post and completed our fence as if we were doing something to just thumb our noses at the city and the process. And that's incorrect because at that time that we had a meeting with Tammy Alcántara, and I believe the city... The man that measured everything, can't recall what his name was. Anyways, we met out there and the only thing at issue at that point in time was what was going on on Roosevelt, which we stopped. And I specifically asked her if we could complete the work at First Street because our fencing contractor was kind of in a holding pattern. And she said, "Yes, absolutely, that's fine. Go ahead and finish that, that's not a problem."
And that is accurate, with the exception is that a pole was added that encroached into the setback after that meeting.
But that was part of finishing the process.
So that wasn't my understanding. My understanding was that the poles that were there were what was left and you just had to put a fence across there.
The holes were dug. Had you gone and looked at it, you would have seen and you could have brought that up, but you didn't.
So the same thing that happened on First Street was it was identified where 15 feet was...
And not at that time, it was not.
With the contract, yes. This was before we ever went out there with the deceased. It was identified with Jay Cook from Public Works with the contractor, and I believe your husband was out there, and he showed them where 15 feet was.
Well, it was not addressed in anything when we were discussing Roosevelt.
That's because we saw the poles were not encroaching in the 15 feet.
Okay, then the comment should have been, "No, you cannot finish it." If a cease and desist was because there were things off, then it should have been a blanket cease and desist because that was not brought up, the holes were already dug, we were in the process of putting all of that there, and you didn't say anything. And in the last meeting that we were here, your comment was, "I didn't know that at the time."
Didn't know?
That it wasn't, it was, the fence was where it was going to be.
No, it's been that the poles that were there at the time were set back sufficiently for the 15-foot setback.
Okay, well...
But there was a pole added and went way farther up towards First Street than ever anticipated because it had been told at the same location there what the 15-foot setback was and was marked there also.
Okay, well, my point is, we did not do it intentionally to thumb our noses at the city. I asked her if we could complete it, she said, "Yes, we could complete it." So we completed it. There was no discussion of, "Don't take it any further. This measurement is for this," or any of that. And Roosevelt was the only thing that anybody wanted to talk about at the time. So I'm just saying, there has not been a clear amount of communication. There's been a lot of things left open so that other people in the neighborhood could make decisions for us. And that fence lines up with the front of the lumberyard. So we're in the same exact spot they are. So that's why we're asking for the variance is because we did everything in good faith. We didn't do anything to be rude about it. We just did what we did because we thought we were doing it in the right place. So that's why we're asking for the variance.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Coleman?
I have a couple of questions. This is inconsequential. You left your vest here last time, did you get it?
Yes, I did. I appreciate that.
I'm curious to know why, why a fence? If you don't know what you're doing with the property, why put a fence up? If you know what your business is and that you need a fence, that makes sense. But if you don't know what you're going to do with the property, why a fence?
To keep people out and to protect ourselves from liability should somebody get hurt. Because a keep-out, private property sign, caution tape works for no one.
Did you have people driving across or walking across?
Yes, we did. We had BNSF bring in some equipment. A trucker came in. We didn't realize at the time that he was doing work for BNSF, but we told him he had to get out. We called the police. The police said, "The guy's just trying to do his job, leave him alone." A city vehicle drove over the tape or maybe the tape was already on the ground from the wind, I don't know. City vehicle parked in the driveway in the property for whatever he was doing at the neighbor's property. Mr. Grassi had some equipment pull in there. The... We did talk to Mr. Grassi. The truck driver was told specifically to keep out of there, but he drove in there anyways because it was a really nice place to turn around. People have always just driven through there because it's convenient. So we put a fence up to keep people out because, you know, I mean, I'm sure you can imagine if somebody gets in there and they get hurt, we're liable. So a good portion of the fence will probably support whatever we may or may not do, we may do later on with the property. And just the... And just the First Street and the Roosevelt may need to be modified. But at this point, this has all been so difficult, we're not going to do anything with that property. We just want to fence it and keep people out.
How long have you been in Escalon?
Me personally, I've been in Escalon for 20 years. My husband has been in Escalon for 51.
Chair, I have no more questions.
I'm sorry, I take that back. Sixty-one years. Forgot how old he was. Yeah.
I've got, I've got a question. So, I mean, it's fully within your right to put up a fence at your lot. But I'm just wondering, because you don't know what's going to go there in the future and it's just for putting up a fence to keep people out, totally understand that, that's your right. Why not just, I mean, the code as we understand it from the city's point of view, why, why is it so difficult to abide by that? Why, why are you looking? I understand you went A, B, C, and D. I mean, I, I actually think personally, I think that if we were to grant this, this variance, we would be possibly saying, you guys are special and we're going against the code to approve that variance. So what, what is it, like, why, what is so special that you can't just go with what's in the code?
I, because we started the project before anybody could tell us what the code actually meant. And the, the ultimate comment was, well, we don't really know, but this is what we, how we've always done it. Or they changed the code because they realized it didn't, it didn't apply to what we were doing. Oh, yeah, that's right. We do have cars parked. All the construction or anything, we have cars parked along the front edge of where we're at. So that would just, more people would just park there whenever they needed to. And honestly, when we started the whole project, we didn't see that, we didn't realize it would be a problem because we were told there were no fencing requirements. That if we put the fence on the property line, just like P and L did at the end of the cul-de-sac, there's no way there's ever going to be any sidewalk down there. And I could see people walking down there to go into the flower shop over there, the nursery, whatever. But he, he is in the street. So we put our fence on the property line about, you know, back a little bit further than that. Whatever it is, I don't have the measurement. But suddenly, it's a problem for us. Because for whatever reason, nobody's happy with anything that we do. Which is part of the reason why we just put a fence up and walk away is what we wanted to do. Just, okay, fine. Leave it alone.
So you're, so you're saying that the fence is in the location where it's at because the city told you that's where it could go? Is that?
Where, where it is at on Roosevelt is the contractor, what, the main contractor wasn't there. His workers were there and they called and they wanted to know where the other post was supposed to go. So I pulled a letter I had from Tammy Alcantor out of my file, which said twenty-three feet from the edge of the road. So I took a tape measure down there and I measured from the, where they wanted to put the post to the road. It was twenty-three feet and I said, you can put it here. So that's where they put it.
So.
And actually, if you follow the fence line, if you follow the fence line on Roosevelt, it is further back because of the way the road curves. So, because we didn't even put it where the marker, the monument is because it's kind of in front of the little house down there at the end of the road. But that was the reason why I told the workers to put the post and the fence line there because that was the information I had at the time. And they were standing there with needing to put the post in the cement and everything else.
So the email said it's approximately twenty-three feet and it varies by locations. And the poles were marked at that time of this was to be the last pole by the city when they put the new pole in.
Well, when I went out there, the pole was not marked. It got marked after I had them put the poles in.
Thank you. Nothing else for me.
Any, any other commissioners have questions?
Mr. Chair, I would be remiss if I didn't have anything to say. But I'll try to make this short and sweet. First of all, counsel, I appreciate your concern about surveying crew. Actually, I was dealing with a similar issue to this, actually just this morning. And I'd had a meeting of the minds of the different surveyors because our horizontal survey was off by two feet.
Happens.
And we came together and resolved the problem, move on down the roads and no one lost their job. So I take exception to that comment.
What's your comment? Did I say the party chief won't keep his job if he keeps making mistakes like that? They probably won't. But no, mistakes are made all the time. That's why I told her to err as human, to forgive divine.
Okay. Secondly, you know, I, I guess, the way that I am looking at this is, yeah, people make mistakes. But in the construction world, if, if work is put in and it's put in incorrectly, then normally, any other contractor would come out and address the problem and fix the problem and move on down the road. And here we are, having another planning commission meeting, talking about the same issue that we talked about ad nauseam in our January meeting. And at this point, I mean, in January is fifty to one hundred hours that the staff put in. I'm sure there's a good another twenty or thirty hours now that we're talking about it in March, plus our own time. And for me personally, I have absolutely nothing against the Coleman's whatsoever. But for me, it boils down to, at the end of the day, why can't we just move the fence back and be done with this issue? I, I think it's such a simple relative fix that frankly, I, I feel like we keep talking about this and it's frustrating to me. Now granted, was the city dimension off by eighteen inches? Sure. But there's a huge difference between eighteen inches and eight feet. So I think the simple fact of the matter is, I, I personally feel that, so our job as the planning commission is to follow the municipal code and adhere to the municipal code. And the fact of the matter is, is if we grant this variance and the city decides to develop Roosevelt and put in sidewalks, now we're going to, we, as the planning commission, run into a situation where now the whole design of the sidewalk and the whole front edge improvements have to change because the planning commission granted a variance to the Coleman's.
Why?
Because that variance stays with the property and so.
Yeah, but you gave them a variance for how far it had to be behind the sidewalk. The sidewalk can go to exactly where you planned it to go. You don't have them with the sidewalk. You've already granted a variance on the setback.
Okay, but then I guess my other question is, in, in all of the arguments that I have read, really, the whole premise that I interpreted as, well, we don't have this problem anywhere else in Roosevelt. And the reality is, as the staff indicated, all of those properties, with the exception of Shenlar, were developed prior to the establishing of the municipal code.
Granted, admitted.
Okay, so.
Why is that relevant to what we're saying though?
Because if anybody else wanted to make future improvements to Roosevelt, they would, they would be held to the same standard as the Coleman's.
Okay. But what we're saying here is that until such time as that happens and until such time as they're going to do something with that property and it doesn't look like that's what they're going to do. And until sometime in the future, somebody decides that they want to do something elaborate on Roosevelt, their property is going to be an anomaly. It's going to be farther back than anybody else. Okay? And I understand what you're saying, but this is not a construction project. There's not a general contractor involved here. These are people that went out and stepped out where they thought it was going to go and were wrong. And consequently, they are going to have what we call a forfeiture. They're going to have to tear posts out of the ground and reset them in to correct that mistake. Okay? It was a mistake. And what I'm telling you is an eighteen inch mistake, everybody makes them. Survey crews make them. We all make them.
So why, why not just correct the mistake?
Because it costs money to do that. They're a private sector person. Money counts.
I understand, but we would, I, just my opinion, but I think that we are spending thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars for staff's time, for planning commission time, for your time, for Wendell Rosen's time, everybody's time. And all we have to do is move this stupid post back and be done.
Do is grant the variance and we won't have to do this again. That's all you have to do. I mean, who's wasting the money here? Are we wasting money by exercising the right to due process? Is that what you're telling them? They don't have the right to come in here and appeal this stuff because it's too expensive?
Absolutely not.
Okay, what are you saying? That we're wasting time? They've decided they're willing to spend the money.
Okay.
How to agenda, I, I would ask you as a businessman, you're a private sector guy, right?
Correct.
How'd they end up with fifty to a hundred hours in this thing for God's sakes? I don't even have that.
I, I can't.
I don't have anywhere near that.
Okay.
So, I mean, everything is coming back to what I said the last time. Coleman's made a mistake, so they got to pay the price. If they put it in the wrong place, they got to move it. Huh? Or they cut it to a shorter length? Cut them in half? How's that going to look? Thirty inches?
What's the municipal code requirement?
Thirty inches if they're going to do that. They can have a thirty inch high. If they cut it off to thirty inches, that follows the code. How does that work? It's just, you're exactly right. We're spending a whole bunch of money here for a fight that really shouldn't have taken place because it would have been so easy to just say, okay, mistakes were made. Put it there. Go forth and don't sin again. You asked how long she'd lived here. I'm not from Escalon. I'm an Oakdale boy. Spent a lot of time in this town though when I was a kid. Drove through it. My mother used to bank in town when I was really little. You know, right around the corner where the old bank used to be, sixty years ago. She used to come in there. I remember I opened up my piggy bank, got all my pennies and dimes up, brought them in there, laid it behind the counter at the teller, took all that change and gave me some folding money, four years old. That's pretty good stuff. And we'd always go across the street to the bakery. That was a special treat. So I have very fond memories of this town. And I say this with my hat in hand, folks. What's gone on here regarding the Coleman's is not this town's finest hour.
Any other questions?
We have someone else coming up to the podium.
Mary Grassi, fourteen fifty-five First Street. All, all I can say about this whole situation is, is that I, I've put up a fence not too long ago right on Roosevelt. And I had to apply for the permit to put up the fence. I had certain, certain rules and regulations that I had to follow to put the fence up. I also had to keep the fence at thirty inches high for fifteen feet back to follow the rules and the regulations and the code. And if I didn't do that, then I would have had to fix the fence. And I, I just don't see where the difference, you know, there's obviously a difference. And if, if you, you know, there's, there's always been a question in my mind is, is a fence is something that's very important and that there should be a permit, you know, whether it's two feet high, eight feet high. I feel that there should always be a third party involved in determining where that fence goes. That's just my personal opinion, just from the fact of some things that has happened in the, in the last two years. And at, at least have a plan, if, if, if it's not a permit, but at least have a plan and supply it or turn it into the city just so everybody understands what's involved in putting a fence up. Then they know exactly where it needs to go. Everybody's aware of what happens. They get the information upfront of what happens. The only reason my, my fence was, had to have a permit was because it was a concrete, concrete wall. And everybody knew exactly what happened, had to happen there. I had to notify my neighbors. I had to let them know what was going on. And to me, I think that's something that should be added possibly to, in the future for fencing is, is no matter what size the fence is, it should be added in that some sort of plan should be turned in so everybody is aware of what is happening. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question of Mr. Grassi?
Yes.
No problem. So, driving down First Street on my way to the meeting tonight, saw that you have some concrete forms. Are those, is that your crew that's installing the formwork?
It's a crew that we hired to do, yes.
Okay, so your surveyor came out, shot those grades or shot the, the points and he's off by eighteen inches. What do you do?
Probably get ahold of Mr. Morris and find out why it was off by eighteen inches and end up moving them.
So you don't pour the concrete? You actually move the formwork?
Well, we moved the formwork, but even if the concrete was poured and we come to find out later on, yeah, it would have to be moved. I mean, especially on Roosevelt, I mean, on First Street. There's, being off eighteen inches can be a huge problem.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak on behalf of this project? Either for or against?
Nobody's stepping up.
Okay. I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Who would like to start first?
I've got a few points. The reason I asked how long you'd been in Escalon, Mrs. Coleman, if you look at the old city layout, Blixed Road hit French Camp Road and continued on down to P and L. It was a roadway to P and L. So in one way, blocking that off for people who may have used that route might make some sense. But also, the, you pointed out that part of the lumber building was in the setback. Again, when the lumberyard was built in eighteen ninety-eight, the road was dirt. There were horse-drawn vehicles, no automobiles, no sidewalks and no setbacks. And as time has gone on and asphalt has been put down, sidewalks have been put down, that has been seen as progress. So to say, to point out that we're not going to do what you're telling us to do because why should we if other people are not in compliance? Well, they just haven't gotten there yet. As they start improving their lots, we'll ask them, put in some sidewalk, put in some gutter, put in some this, put in some that. And again, that's progress. We want to progress. We don't want to regress. So, and we also want, in addition to complying with the code, we want something aesthetically pleasing. And you're within a block of the main street. It seems like you'd want to have it be aesthetically pleasing and not something like a cyclone fence with slots in it. Those are my thoughts. It'd be one thing if it was behind, you know, if you're, like, say, along the railroad tracks. But you've got it visible on First, visible on Roosevelt. You've got, even though it's a commercial zone, you've got residents. They want to see something attractive. They want to see something that conforms, that is consistent. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner. If you're standing here, would you like to make any? If you're standing here, would you like to make any comment or discussion or have questions?
Sure. Uh, I'll go next. Um, that property has been uh, the subject of non-conforming uh, ever since Coleman's uh, showed up. Uh, they, they put their steel out there, it benefited Randy and the lumberyard, the city. Uh, although not, uh, it was not a permitted use, went along with it to help out a resident a- and business person uh, m- maintain his business. Uh, at the end of that business, that non-permitted use was removed. And now we have a, a vacant lot. So I would, I go back to what I was asking originally, and that is, is a fence required on a vacant lot? And what I hear is no. And, you know, if you go ahead and, and you do things and you, you don't, you don't have a full understanding whether it's approved or it isn't, well, you end up with what you get. You're asking us to approve a variance. And, and a variance goes with the property, but the variance, there, there has to be a hardship. There, I don't know what a hardship is on a vacant piece of property, where other than you may have some uh, people that wanna use it for parking. There's other ways to uh, fend that off with signage, what have you, even if you want the fence. Uh, it would have to uh, comport with the new, the new ordinance, the existing municipal code. And, and I don't think at that point you need a variance. And so, just addressing the issue of variance there, I, I, I don't see a need for it, a- and I couldn't approve one. I look at the uh, requirements for approval and you really, uh, I think D is the only one that really doesn't apply, the other ones uh, all, all work against you. So, those are my thoughts, and, and that's the way I see it. And, you know, I think if you move the, your post back and you meet the municipal code requirements there, you're, you're good. And if there's a problem with people parking in front of it, you'll have to address that issue when it comes up. Thank you.
Mr. Sarkozy, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, can, uh, Chair, I don't have any additional comments, no.
Mr. Strowman, do you have any questions or comments?
Um, nothing further, Chair.
Okay. Um, I have a question for uh, staff. If the fence stays and they start to erect some sort of structure on that property, at that time, would the ci- would the fence have to be taken down and relocated to its proper location?
So, are you, and, are you meaning where a variance is approved on the fencing and then they move forward in the future with a building?
Yes. In other words, is, is, i- if the variance is approved, the fence stays forever regardless if it stays vacant or they build a s- some structure on there. Or they can, they develop into s- into something besides a vacant lot.
So that would be up to the planning commission's determination. Um, if the variance is approved, we have the conditions of approval, and you could opt at that time, if that's a concern of planning commission, to condition it to where it's fine for now, but in the event that development takes place, you know, uh, construction of a building or a development project, that you would open up, that you could open up the fencing to relocating to the current municipal code requirements, that's, that would be at planning commission's discretion.
Pardon me for interrupting, but doesn't that fall under the general and specific conditions if it's, the variance is granted? Yeah, specific and general conditions, which almost made for gone conclusion that you would have the power to force the fence.
Excuse me, who's, who's speaking?
I'm sorry, Brett Dickerson.
Um, the, do we need, I don't, you know, we just closed the public comments, it's now back to the commission.
Staff is, staff is looking up a point.
So he, he was, he was asking about where it would go in the conditions, and so if that was a condition, we have our general conditions and our specific conditions, so if that was what the planning commission agreed upon and asked for it to be added into the conditions, it would go under specific in, uh, conditions. So, under the approval, uh, number one of the specific conditions.
Okay. Well, I was asking it more as, you know, if, if we approve this, is that fence permanent there? Um,
So if it's, it would be staff's understanding if the variance was approved and no conditions regarding future development on the lot were imposed, then the, the fence would stay in that location until it was moved, basically. So, it w- it would run with the property, so until the fence is gone, it would, it would stay on the, it would be in effect.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Miss, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
My apologies, but uh, I just had a fleeting thought. And we heard from um, a member, a constituent come to the podium and state that he was required to get a permit to build his fence um, in close proximity to the Coleman's. And so I, my question to staff is, why was that constituent required to get a permit and the Coleman's weren't?
This was for the fence?
For the, for the masonry wall.
If you build a masonry wall, it requires a permit, even if you're below the seven feet.
Okay.
Um, the fence on the Coleman's property is a cyclone fence, that's seven feet or less, that does not require a permit.
Okay, so the trigger was a masonry wall.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
And then Diana pointed out, uh, for the previous question that Chair Casleanos was asking, item number three does have a general statement in there on future development. Upon development of the property, planning commission may require changes to the location or materials of the fence. So this is very general in terms. Um, that's recommended or proposed, that can be modified by the planning commission if you move forward with the variance approval. Or removed completely depending on what you agree upon.
Okay, well, thank you for that clarification. Um, any other comments from the commission? Did uh, like, somebody wanna make a motion?
Did you close the public hearing?
Yeah, he did.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I closed it a while ago.
Thank you.
Do I hear anybody wanna make a, a motion?
Commissioner Costin, I, I'd like to make a motion uh, uh, to deny the, the variance uh, based on staff's recommendation and the uh, the fact that they don't meet the conditions of a variance. I think when you get a property uh, application that's gonna actually have something built on it, we could re- uh, view the issue then, and uh, you know, maybe a variance would be appropriate at that point, but it isn't now. So I, I move that we deny the application.
I second the motion.
Mark, did you say you seconded?
Yes.
Okay, have, have a vote, all in favor of the motion to deny the application, say aye.
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 Say no? Motion carried five to zero. Thank you. Okay, the, the next item is application twenty-one, seven forty, fourteen eighty-one Ullery Avenue. This request is a reduction in the required parking spaces from eleven to four for a future twenty-six-hundred-and-seven square foot office building addition. Staff report, please.
Thank you. Sorry, have to find my notes.
That's okay.
There we go. Okay, before us tonight is a variance for fourteen eighty-one Ullery Avenue. In two thousand two, uh, the California Correctional Supervisors Organization, which I'm going to hereafter refer to as CCSO, uh, received approval to construct a new two-story office building. This was completed in two thousand three. Fifteen years later, uh, they purchased the adjacent lot that's between them and the Dollar Tree to the west. Uh, the lots were subsequently merged in two thousand twenty. A CCSO completed a parking lot expansion and added four parking spaces extending across the newly merged lot. CCSO has indicated they intend to apply for site plan review to construct a two-thousand-six-hundred-and-seven square foot addition to the existing office building that will extend west across the new lot. In accordance with Escalon municipal code requirements, a tentative building addition of two-thousand-six-hundred-and-seven square feet would require eleven new parking spaces. And as we mentioned, the parking lot expansion completed last year added four additional spaces. The a- applicant is applying for a variance, requesting a reduction in required onsite parking from eleven spaces to four spaces. And Escalon municipal code, section seventeen four-three oh-four-oh, uh, provides guidance for parking reductions. This is outside of a variance, this would just be during regular site plan review, and which is attached as exhibit F. Uh, after reviewing that section of the code, um, the project may qualify for a ten percent parking reduction if planning commission was able to make certain findings. A ten percent reduction would not result in a significant enough parking reduction. Therefore, the applicant has applied for a variance. There are four findings required for a variance. Uh, A, that there are special circumstances applicable to the subject property or to the intended case, which do not generally apply to other properties in the same vicinity under identical zone classifications. And the applicant explains that their sec- special circumstance is due to the work schedule of CCSO employees. Not everyone is onsite at the same time. Some travel to off-site prison locations, some are working from home. Um, and since not everyone is at the site at the same time, their office use uh, could use a reduction in parking and not, not cause on-street parking. Um, characteristics of the property, uh, unique or otherwise, are not mentioned. Finding B, that the special circumstances relate to the property or use, not the financial or personal condition of the applicant, nor to any self-imposed condition on the property that's a result of actions taken by the present owner or his predecessor. And the parking requirements being applied are for office use. The parking requirements apply not only to this business, business, but also office businesses that could purchase the building in the future. Uh, who may have employees onsite all at one time. If the parking reduction was granted, the site may be deficit on onsite parking in the future, which may push employees or customers to park in the street or surrounding business parking lots. As we see with old buildings and old projects, once infrastructure, meaning the building and the parking lot are in place, it's difficult to overcome parking shortages in the future. The need for a reduction in parking is created by a self-imposed situation. The applicant's addition is nearly the same size as the original building, but it doesn't have the space to accommodate the additional eleven parking spaces. A smaller-sized building addition of a thousand square feet or less would require four or less parking spaces, which the site has already been able to create. Finding C, that the granting of a variance shall not constitute a grant of special privilege, inconsistent with the limitations upon other property in the vicinity and of the same zone classification. Uh, planning commission reviews for surrounding businesses were reviewed for parking details. Um, the Dollar Tree, the Escalon ambulance, police department, City Hall, the medical clinic next door, the former Friendly Chevrolet, all of those projects were reviewed, and all of them provided more spaces than what was required by the municipal code. Finding D, that the result would not be detrimental to the public health, safety, welfare, or material injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity. There's no definitive danger to health, safety, or welfare uh, if a shortage of parking, parking would cause people to park in the street uh, for this project. A shortage of parking would create an increase in street parking. And it could contribute to street and traffic congestion. We just have to be mindful, um, that there are emergency service, services in the area, meaning the Escalon ambulance. Um, and while they had no direct concerns, uh, we spoke to the ambulance, they had no direct concerns about street parking, but did mention that, that overall street congestion, um, it's easier to navigate in and out quickly and safely without street congestion. Public outreach, uh, public hearing notice appeared in the Escalon Times, February twenty-fourth. The same public notice hearing was mailed to every property owner and occupant within three hundred feet, and we did not receive any responses as a result of sending out that public hearing. Planning commission's decision tonight begins a ten-business-day appeal period, which expires March twenty-third at five P M. Staff's recommendation, based on the municipal code and the findings that are required, is that the planning commission deny the application as proposed. Procedure, planning commission should open the public hearing and take public testimony on the project and close the public hearing. And if the planning commission determines to approve the application, you would make the findings required for section seventeen point five-seven for variances, find the project SEQA class thirty-two categorically exempt for infill development, and authorize staff to file a SEQA notice of exemption, and approve the application with the conditions of approval proposed below or as modified. If you have, um, the only specific condition to go over is just site plan review. Um, if, if the applicants are moving forward with the size building, whether they keep the same size building that they have because the variance is approved, or if they have to modify the size of the building, either, when they're building the building, they have to come back to you for site plan review. Anything with the building is site plan review. If you have any questions for staff, we are available. We also have two representatives from the CCSO in the audience, if you have questions for them.
Any questions for staff from the commission?
I would like to get something clarified. If the building is two-thousand-six-hundred-and-seven feet, and in the middle there's thirteen hundred square feet of open space, you have one parking spot for every two-hundred-and-fifty square feet of office space, and if you subtract thirteen hundred from twenty-six oh-seven and get twelve fifty, then that would be five spaces. So if they have four, they're only down by one. Does that make sense?
Where do you have that we're taking out thirteen hundred square feet?
It's the space in the middle of the building that's not occupied by offices.
I think what Commissioner, what Commissioner Willis is referring to is that, is the definition of office.
Yeah, gross or net, it's gross floor area. Business, professional offices, banks, institutions, insurance companies, one parking space for two-hundred-and-fifty square feet of gross floor area. So it's the building, it's the gross area, you don't deduct anything, you don't deduct anything out of it.
So even if it's space, whether it's not gonna be a person, not gonna be a desk, not gonna be any business going on, it's just an open area, like an atrium or something, you still have to
If it's inside the building.
Create parking for that.
Yes.
Cause it's within the footprint of the building.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I have two questions for staff.
Sure, go right ahead.
So I'm looking at exhibit B as in Bravo. Um, is the red outlined area the current property lines?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, the image is old off of Google Earth, so this, if you can see where the mouse is moving. Um, this was that secondary lot that they this was that secondary lot that they purchased later. And the front of it, this polygon shape up here in the front, has been turned into a parking lot. Only this part to the south is, remains undeveloped.
Okay, now, move your arrow down, move the cursor down. That area straight, that little triangle area?
Is Dollar Tree.
So Dollar Tree owns that little section?
Correct.
But it's not paved?
It is not.
Okay.
There's a fence on the property line, right?
The fence is on the property line?
Isn't there? I was asking that question. There's a fence along that property line.
Right. And this triangle area is their, like, onsite storm retention area?
And then the property, go behind the building. That built, who owns that property?
Dollar Tree.
Okay.
And the applicant, well, they can speak to it when they come up. They have reached out to Dollar Tree multiple times. We, who we had contacts at Dollar Tree from when it was built, we have reached out to them because they thought of maybe purchasing that. And Dollar Tree just does not respond.
Okay.
Okay, what about in Exhibit F, B, where it says, "When common off-street public parking located within three hundred feet of the use is served will provide twenty or more parking spaces, up to ten required onsite parking spaces may be deleted from the project." Well, how far does three hundred feet go from this, from the CCSO?
That's a very good question.
To City Hall, to the health facility, to Carter Olive Dollar Tree, or...
I don't quite know. I would have to use our software to go in and do some measurements. I don't, I don't know off the top of my head.
Well, and then also, on the back of that, it says, "A city may place conditions of approval on any development plan that the developer builder pays to the city of Escalon a per-parking-space fee, determined on a per-project basis." So if, what if we approved this, thinking that it was adequate parking, but we thought, okay, they might have to use Dollar Tree, they might have to use the City Hall parking, and they could compensate the city a fee that would help offset repairing that somewhere down the road? Is that what that is?
Not saying that they would pay the city a per-parking-space fee, but then the city needs to turn around and use that money for improvements, like they say, public parking, sidewalks, crosswalks, lighting, pedestrian landings, bicycle lanes. Where it can be determined, there is a nexus between increased traffic of the development and improvements being requested.
So like wear and tear and whatnot, or damage?
Any other questions for staff?
I do, but I was trying to be polite and go in order. Is there any, am I net?
Yes.
I don't know. Whoever wants to comment, please make it.
All right, I'm a pretty simple guy. I like to address things that are in front of me. And so I would ask staff, have you seen any of the plans that are proposed to be submitted?
For this project, yes, they are attached. If you look at Exhibit C, we have a site plan. That'll show the overhead view of the annexation, the addition to the building.
Okay, but you don't know what the, do you have something about the interior? Okay, there you go. So where is this thousand, thousand feet of open space?
Let's see. Is that the boardroom?
To the right.
Over here?
Right there. That's the new, that's the new portion. The other side to the left is our old building.
This is old?
That's the old building.
And this is the new?
That is the new.
So it's...
Oh, no, I'm sorry. It went to the left there, but it's the new.
Let's zoom, let's zoom in. That's okay.
That's the new boardroom proposal.
And is the thirteen hundred square feet the boardroom?
Well, what I did, I took the thirteen hundred feet, because the total was twenty-six, so I took that bottom, that whole bottom, including those two breakout rooms, to me was just the boardroom. We know offices and no new staff in that particular first floor. So I basically said, maybe the calculation, as Commissioner Willis said, maybe it shouldn't count on the calculation for the parking lot stalls. That was one of my mitigating factors.
Were you able to hear that, Commissioner Dan Ziger? Otherwise, I'll have him come up to the podium and... Or maybe we'll, maybe we'll save that question for public comment.
Okay.
Okay. We'll save it for public comment.
When the lots were merged, there were four parking spaces added to the, what, I guess it was eight before?
Eight parking spaces before. Lots were merged. Parking lot expanded. Four additional parking spaces created.
Why did, why did it come up to four, five, or three?
Ask that again, it was a little bit garbled.
Okay, well, I was just doing some simple math, and I divided the existing building square footage by twelve parking spaces, and that comes up to two hundred and fifty-three square feet. So one parking spot per two hundred and fifty-three square feet, which kind of brings the existing building into today's world for parking space requirements.
Right.
What is, what is going to be the occupancy of the conference room, the boardroom?
We'll have to ask that question of the applicant. I don't know, the building department establishes occupancy. They haven't gotten that far in the process to know yet.
Okay, all right, I'll say that.
Sure. And then your point about the parking for the existing, the existing building, so in two thousand and two, when the original building was built, the staff report said that eight parking spaces were required, and the formula listed on the plans is one parking space for every four hundred square feet of building size. So...
Got you, I read that.
Uh-huh. We're not going back and saying the existing building now needs to meet one every two hundred and fifty square feet. We are only looking at the addition, saying the additional twenty-six hundred, by today's standards, require the eleven spaces.
Are they asking that those four spaces that were added be all that they would need for the new building?
Correct.
Is that, is that the board requirement?
That's correct.
So they're not looking at adding any other parking spaces other than the existing twelve?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Staff, I have a question. So if this was approved, can we put a stipulation that it stays with, you know, if the property is sold or repurposed, it may have to be dealt with? Because, I mean, I walked by there many times, and the parking lot is empty. There are very few cars. So I understand what they're, what they're saying, how their business is. But it does propose a problem down the, down the road if it's another, another business there. They could renovate, you know, the whole interior and make every square foot an office, which, you know, would not work for this. So is that, is that an option?
It would require a permit, and you'd have to approve that.
So the parking requirement is based on gross floor area. So whether the whole thing was offices, or whether it's all open area, the parking requirement is the same. It's based on use. You're in office use. I mean, is it possible to put a condition for future use? Yes, but, but, yes, but, like I said, once infrastructure is built, it's very difficult to change. So we put a condition that says, you know, if CCSO ever sells to a different office use, you have to comply with the parking requirements. Are we going to make them go demolish a thousand square feet of their building? No, probably not. So then we are stuck with how we are with some of our older projects, where they have a business use that doesn't have enough parking.
Thank you.
Chair?
Yep.
He's waking you up.
He said, oh.
Anybody else, any other comments from anybody?
I'm waiting for the applicant.
Okay, I have a question for staff. On the, the set of plans for the site plan, it shows there is only one curb cut to get access into this property?
That's correct. They have a driveway that's both an entrance and an exit.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's, I meant to ask questions of the applicant, and that was the only question I have at this point in time. Okay, no other questions? I'll open up the public hearing. Please come to the podium and state your name, or if you're calling in, please, when you speak, please tell us your name and...
Thank you, Steve.
Anybody?
I want to thank you for giving us an opportunity to come speak with you, to hopefully, I can provide some mitigating factors to hopefully, so you can make a decision, and we're asking you to counter or overturn staff's recommendation.
Sir, can you announce for the record who you...
My name is Dale Clayton. I work for CCSO, and this is our president, Art Gonzalez. We're both retired CDCR employees. We're both administrators. I retired as a warden, he retired as a captain. So we're here today to, to ask you for a variance so we can build an annex on. But before I start with that, what I'd like to do, I'd like to talk about a little bit what we do and what we provide for the city. I think that, that helps in maybe your decisions. But we started in nineteen ninety-two. We had an office down in the, on Main Street, and then we end up buying the parcel over here, and then we constructed our building. And as you can see, when we constructed our building, the only requirement was for eight stalls. So what we do, we provide legal services for our law enforcement community. And when I say legal services, sometimes with CDCR, inmates have these frivolous lawsuits. So when you're rank and file, you belong to a union. But our members are supervisors and managers, and they're not protected by a union. So we started the organization, and now they provide a small fee to us, and we provide them the attorneys if once they...
They're just clearing.
Somebody say something?
No.
Oh. So, once they're under investigation, or they're being interrogated, or there's some adverse action against them, we provide the attorney. So as opposed to them paying thousands of dollars to protect themselves from the frivolous lawsuits that the inmates do, we provide services. Our fees are strictly from members. We don't get any other revenue stream except for those members. So not only we provide them a benefit, we have provided the city a benefit for years. So just in two thousand and nineteen, we spent thirty thousand dollars for the community on all of our donations. And I think this is important because your recreation department, we've provided many donations to the teams that, and they, that do the recreation out here in the city. In addition to that, we've provided donations to all of our churches. Matter of fact, just recently, I think it was in January, we gave the Ministerial Association two thousand dollars for the food bank. We've also provided donations to the many law enforcement personnel we have in the city, and there's many of them. Matter of fact, Jack McKinnon, who is a lieutenant in Stanislaus Sheriff's Department, he, comes to him every year, and he asks for five hundred dollars so he can ride his bike in Washington, DC for the fallen officers. He's never said no to anything. And another issue is that everybody here has a Cougar Card. We haven't sold any this year, but everybody has a Cougar Card. But you know what? We have all those football players that come over here. We have thirty of them. So if you'd like to have some, we have, we'll pass them out to the city. He buys everything, if someone comes to our office for a donation, we provide it. Last, also, when we were talking with Dominic and Diana, there was a need for your police department. Last two elections ago, your city was asking to raise sales tax. I was approached by Sergeant Flores, if we can help in anything to get that sales tax passed. So I, again, I approached our president. He didn't just help him. We paid for the entire advertisement budget that he had to get that thing passed. No ifs, ands, or buts. It's for law enforcement. We did not say no. We said absolutely, we will do that. We paid it, we funded it, and we paid the whole entire cost of that. So those are just some of the things that we've done. I mean, that's in the city. In, in terms of California, we have sponsored the Medal of Valor in State Capitol. We've paid for that, we sponsored that, and those are for the fallen, or the heroic deeds that officers provide, or do for California, and we have paid for that too. So we do more than just provide the legal services. We do, we do a number of things for our city. We're pretty proud of that. So, so what we're asking for, we purchased that lot. And Diana, I think you mentioned it's self-imposed. I don't, I don't consider it was self, was self-imposed. We purchased that lot because it was available. Swanson owned it. Nobody was going to build on that thing. So what we did, we said, you know, well, let's go ahead and buy that. So we bought it. The intention with our past president was to go ahead and, and make it look good because it was an eyesore, and so we purchased it. So two years ago, what happened was, the governor started taking the inmates out of the prison system. It made it seem like our crime is going down. It wasn't going down, but the inmates were gone, but they were impacting the county jails. But as a result of that, our membership went down. And when now that our membership went down, we're losing twenty-six thousand dollars a month in member fees that we had before. So therefore, we need to cut costs. So what he wants to do, he said, we're spending a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year on our board meetings. We don't have room over there right now to do board meetings. We're conducting them off-site, Sacramento or LA. It's a hundred and fifty thousand bucks. But we thought we do. Let's build a building with the boardroom. We'll have them here. We'll keep the money in the city. We'll buy your food, and we'll basically do the same thing what the ambulance department is doing now. So to us, we can probably pay that off in about five years, so we'd be saving some money. But what the ambulance does, they have their boardroom meetings after hours. We're going to do the same thing. So we're going to have our board meetings after hours. But we're going to use that also for training. So when the ambulance has their board meetings, any idea where they park? Our lot, yes. After hours, our lot, yes. So we're just trying to do the same thing. We're not going to park in their lot, okay? But anyway, but that, that's basically what we want to do by building that boardroom. So the question came, well, just one floor. Yeah, we can maybe do one floor. It doesn't make sense. If we're going to do one floor, we're already impacted in our original office. We have two staff to almost in every office. We had to make some modifications to our existing building. So we have to get rid of one office for a thoroughfare. There goes two staff members being displaced. Because of the pandemic and the new technology, we needed audiovisual room for our Zoom meetings now. So there goes another office, two staff are displaced. So we wanted, we need to put them back over to the annex. Not to mention that, yeah, we have a computer room, stuff like that. So the world's changing. The pandemic is changing a lot of things. And what the pandemic has changed, particularly in the business world and the office world, you asked a very important question, that, that he's already modified our schedules, and I've seen it here in your staff too, because I don't see that much traffic here either. I don't know if you're working remotely or alternating, but we're doing that now. So what we've done, we have twelve staff over there. No given time, there's no more than eight, and some less. We've reduced our staff going there by twenty-five percent because we're working remotely. And that's nothing new. I think most of the offices are going to be doing that. So therefore, what I indicated about the two hundred and fifty square feet, maybe that should go back to four hundred because the... maybe that should go back to 400 because the, because there's too many. It's just cheaper to work remotely. So it's evolving, it's changing. So we're hoping that you see at least, yeah, we need six more. But when we put in the parking lot, there is another two spaces for two compact cars. But when they engineered it, and there's certain regulations, city has certain regulations. But if you go over there, I think you will agree, we can fit two more compact cars, pretty simple. So if we had, say you had six, now we only need to come up with five? We're asking five, if we count that? So the, the other mitigating factor is, you also mentioned in your report that we take exception to, is that the ambulance said the, if we had to park out there, which we won't have to park out there because we're not hiring any new staff. We're just using that for a boardroom. No, no new staff can be hired by us. We've been here 29 years. We hope to stay here for another 29 years. Prisons aren't gonna get away. We're, we have no intentions of leaving. Except if we don't, can't cut our costs, and most of our work is done in Sacramento, there could be a possibility, we may have to go someplace else. I'm not sure. It all depends on what our fiduciary responsibility is to our members. But I was talking about the ambulance department. They say it's congested. I, I take exception to that. I respect what you wrote. I'm not, you guys do a great job. You've been very helpful to me. But I just took a trip over to the fire department this, probably about 3 o'clock. And you know Hogan Manufacturer, and that for the last, for the last 40 years I've lived here, they've always parked their trucks on that street, cars and trucks. When those, when those fire trucks leave, you got the whole bank. If that was an issue with the city, that whole block would have a red curb, so no one would park there. My guess is there've been no complaints for the last, how many years that's been there? So I don't expect that's an issue over there as well. So I'm just asking for your consideration. If I was to, if what we do for the city, and maybe we need three more parking stalls, four more parking stalls, I think our efforts, what we do for the city, I don't think it's worth three stalls to quiver over. And I'm asking you to, if there's a condition, one of the conditions we can think about is that I'd love to lease four stalls right here at the city. We're right across the street. If the city would allow us to do that, we'd love to do that, pay the lease agreement, and we're here forever. And then that would be done. But I'm still saying about the 1,300 square feet on the bottom floor, based on the times, based on the pandemic, based on the world changing, I think maybe we need to take a look at our codes. And maybe 250 shouldn't be 250. Maybe it should go back to 400. More people are not working at the site. They're working remotely. Doesn't require as many people. And I like your question about, it's a boardroom. We're not putting any staff there. Once a quarter, yeah, we may bring 15 people for a board. At night, 5 o'clock, it shouldn't impact anything. So I'm hoping that you guys could see that, overturn their recommendation, and we can still partner with you and still provide the same benefits we've been providing since 1992. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
I have one question, at least.
Go ahead, Barb.
It, it doesn't seem that long ago, maybe before the pandemic, that that lot was full all the time. So if it's the pandemic causing it not to be full, will it go back to that when the pandemic is over?
Well, when you said the lot was always full, that was brought to our attention also. Was it the time, well, I said the lot was always full. You had some cars on the streets also because we put the new parking lot in.
This was before then.
Okay, well, I would say, back then, we had 12 staff. We still have 12 staff, but we now have additional parking spaces. But I think what I pointed out, we were gonna have a reduction of 25% because of the working from, from home remotely. So now, matter of fact, in our brochure, in our brochure, they took several pictures of our parking lot. I don't know what day, what time, I just saw that. And I think I saw four cars. If you look at their pictures, not our pictures. So it's not, it's not that impacted. And if there's a condition, if we sell it, which, again, that's speculation. We're speculating that we're gonna sell it. We've been here for 29 years. Prisons don't go away. We want to stay here. I don't think that's very likely.
Were you involved with CCSO in 92?
I was a member in 92, but I did not start it. The two major parties have started it. He's no longer our president, Rich Tatum, you probably know him. But he took over for Rich Tatum. But I've been a member for a long time. Yes.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. First of all, Mr. Clayton, and what was your president's name?
Art Gonzo, Art Gonzalez.
So Mr. Clayton and Mr. Gonzalez, thank you very much for your service. I spent some time in prison, not as an inmate, but as a construction manager.
Which one?
So I've worked at CCC, High Desert, SCC, and I was this close to starting a boiler replacement project that's supposed to kick off in San Quentin in April, but...
Were you, were you employee, or were you a contractor?
I'm a consultant.
Okay, so you went in there consulting for the prison because of, they had some type of capital outlay project that they were doing?
For the HICFIB program. Are you familiar with the HICFIB program?
Yes, medical.
Oh, yes, 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 medical, that's our nightmare.
For the HICFIB program. So we don't want to bore our fellow commissioners with the...
We'll talk later.
...improprieties of that program. But thank you very much for your service. It's a tough job, that's for sure. Just my only quick question is, what is the frequency of your board meetings?
Quarterly.
And they're held after hours?
We're gonna, yes, we're gonna, we're gonna hold them after hours, yes. Staff get, they get off at 4 o'clock, and so we do, we do this during the weekday. And yes, we're gonna hold them after, after hours.
What days of the week are they held?
Usually they're on Fridays.
Okay.
Typically.
Okay. No further questions, Mr. Chair.
Are we done?
Do you have any questions?
I do. I have one for Mr. Clayton. Currently, you, you have your board meetings offsite?
We do, either in Sacramento, either Northern California or Southern California. We rotate it to give the board members, so they don't have to travel as much.
What's the frequency?
Every quarter. However, we do bring them up occasionally for some minor meetings in between. And also, we have a little bit of training, which we wanted to use that boardroom for all of that as well. We don't have enough space in our existing facilities for a training or a board meeting in our existing space.
All right. Well, how many people show up to the board meeting that aren't already current employees at, at that site?
Very few members show up. Generally, it's the board meetings and our staff. We generally have about 15 members that show up.
In addition to whatever staff is on site?
No, not necessarily. That's, that's total. We have, the board, we have seven board members, and then we have staff that show up. Occasionally, we may have a member that requests to come and discuss an issue. Occasionally, that will happen. It's not very often that it does. We also have an attorney that we bring up. That's hit and miss sometimes, but he shows up as well. Our board meetings are very, very productive, very quick. There's not a whole lot of issues. We provide the services to the staff members. We do a pretty good job about it. We have a great group of attorneys that we're paying at about 100 and about 1.5 million dollars a year. And I think we do a pretty good job at that.
Yeah, okay. I, I would just like to say that there is nothing, you know, we appreciate all the work that you guys do and your service. Our staff has to deal with everybody in the city. When we treat one group one way and somebody else another way, people start wondering. Parking is a, is a real tight issue in the city, as you probably know. And so that's why we look at these things, you know, very closely. And it's not like we don't want to work with you here, but it looks like what you're asking is a lot less than what the city did require. And I guess that was just it for my questions to you. My next question would be for staff. Thank you.
Okay, but if I can respond to that. I, I totally understand what you're saying. But I think part of my mitigating factors is that the city, the city is asking for more, but you as a commission, I think you maybe should go back and look at what your codes are. And because of the changing world, it's evolving globally, that, that, and you can look at the Bay Area, a lot of the workers aren't going to the offices anymore. So that's gonna change, and this evident with us. Actually, we're, we've have a reduc, we're gonna have a reduction of 25% of our staff going to the office, and that's gonna be permanent. And that, we're not the only one. And I, and I look here at the city, and you can correct me. I don't know if you guys are working remotely, but I know there's very minimal amount of, well, you don't have anybody coming inside. I know they're not here inside because their doors are closed. But I, but it's changing. So, so maybe it shouldn't be 250. Maybe it should go back to 400. We have 400 when we opened that, our first building. We, all we required was eight. I don't think you'll have, you didn't have one comment, one complaint about parking on the street. It's all been parked over there. That wasn't an issue. And actually, since he came aboard, we go to the work sites more often than what we did before. The past administration was a little more chintzy with the dollar, and they didn't go out as much. Our staff is out to the prisons all the time. So actually, we're gonna have a lot, lot less. So the, so the issue, if we sell it, I know that's an issue. If there's a condition you want to put on us, but I can tell you that if you've been here for 29 years already, we're gonna be here for another 20, 29 years. And if we need to put a condition on it, or if the city is willing to give us a lease for four, we're right across the street, we'd be happy to do that. I don't know what the process would be. I don't know if it's you reaching out to us or us reaching out to you. But we did talk to the gentleman in back of us. He's willing to give us a lease agreement, the old Chevrolet dealership. One little problem, I mean, we can do that right now. There's no direct pathway from him to us, so we're gonna park over there, then people are gonna walk all around you. Is that gonna happen? No, they're gonna park on the street. I can tell you that, yeah, we're gonna do that. But personally, I don't think that would work. What would work is if we can do a lease agreement of four or five stalls right here, and would we use them? Probably not. There's no need to, at least for us, it's not. But maybe a condition would be if we sell it, the new prospective buyers have to use, do the same lease agreement. I mean, we're open to anything. We're open to anything that you can work with us. We want to stay here. We want to provide that 30,000 bucks to the, to the, we, I didn't even mention the high school. We provide all kinds of funding to the high school. You can see our name in the gym that we provide the funding. So we're here to stay. We want to help, we want to help the city. And he says no to nothing, and I'm gonna bring some Cougar cards over to you also.
Any other questions, Kurt?
I'm done.
Any other questions?
If you could come up and say your name.
State your name.
Art Gonzalez, CCSO State President. I just wonder, with the old variance or the old code, with our existing building currently right now, if we do match that up with the new building, what does it fall under when we do, if we do decide to sell it 20 years from now? Because we would have a split building. One was under the old code, and the other one. Do they all fall under the new code after that, if it sells?
I'm not quite clear on...
We have eight stalls right now for the existing building right now. Is it eight?
Right.
And if we go with the addition on it, what does, what does the whole building fall under now? That's my question.
You've merged the lots, the buildings are attached. Not separate attached, but it is all, it is all one. And so it's acceptable as it is, existing.
Are you asking for parking spaces?
Yes, the parking space that...
So like, if you were to sell the building, what would the new person be required to meet?
Yeah, the new person came up to me, if I was gonna buy the property, and I said, "Well, there's two buildings here. One had these eight or 12 slots, so to speak, when it first built, and now we only have four for this building." How were you able to get that?
It's merged. You no longer have this building, this parking lot, that building, that parking lot. I have a building, and I have a parking lot, and it is acceptable.
Oh, as is.
As is.
As is, whatever you guys give us. Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
But I think his question is, if they put a condition that if the property sells, that the parking would have to be mitigated. So if the property sells, what would a new owner have to do to mitigate the parking?
Because the existing building doesn't meet code.
If the...
The existing building right now does not meet code.
If they put that as a, a condition of the variance, if they passed the variance, if they granted the variance, and they said, if the property sells, then a new owner would have to mitigate parking.
Would have to meet current code, I mean...
Well, and that's his question. So what would current code be?
The variance period is over, correct?
No, 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 no variance. No variance, just as is.
No variance. If the variance is denied...
If the variance is denied, or let's just say we get the variance on the, the, we don't have enough stalls for the existing, the current, on the building being built.
Oh, I got you, okay.
We're short parking spots on the building being built.
Correct.
Our current building is currently below standard right now under the current lot. It was granted in 92.
Right.
If we were to sell this property, or is that whole entire square footage now out of compliance with all existing property? Or which one do they fall under? Are they two separate?
Sell it without the annex?
I think you're saying, if there's a new owner, would it be calculated on 400 square feet for the whole building, or 250?
No, 400 for the entire building.
Yeah.
Both buildings combined now.
Well...
So we're really short on parking spots.
Once it's built and existing, it is accepted.
Our current building right now that we are in currently right now, minus the four that we just installed, meet this...
It does not meet current code, but it is acceptable.
But it is acceptable.
And we do not ask you to change it.
And you do not ask us to change it, right?
Correct. And if you sell it, as is, with the, with no annex, but if you didn't have the four parking spaces that you did...
It would be good.
It would be good. The next person to buy it would be good because it is existing and acceptable.
So let's say we're denied or given a variance for our new building, and they merge together. When the new person buy it, what do they fall under now? That whole variance?
It depends upon how the variance is passed.
You see what I'm saying? Because they're both not meeting code.
Well, the variance runs with the land...
The old and the new then will not be meeting code.
Like Tammy said, it depends how, depends how the variance is written. The variance runs with the land. So whatever conditions are put on it, whether it's leasing spaces from City Hall, whether it's future owner has to provide adequate, you know, meet current code for parking.
And that would be my point, is if, if we were to sell it, and a guy came up to us and said, "Hey, we want to buy this property." How were you able to get by this? It was 1992 when we purchased this, so we were short parking spots. We had a variance in 2021, which is we're short. So when he comes back to you guys, what's he gonna fall under?
Well, what's he gonna come to us for?
Yeah. What's he gonna come to? That entire building now becomes the new, the new...
Well, your variance...
Subject?
To current code, then.
You see what I'm saying? That's...
Yes, yes. If the variance is that, that we're gonna allow you to have four spaces, but when you sell it, the new buyer has to meet current code for parking.
So that's, that's my point, is that that would be a good variance, in our opinion, is that we already don't meet code on our existing building for today's times, and we're adding an addition that doesn't meet code. So if you do grant us that, we would have to sell it under the condition that the new owners would have to come to you[1781.85] with the entire square footage and meet that parking lot requirement of current times. Just a food for thought.
I wouldn't think that they would have to do the whole building.
The whole building, yes.
Because the original half-
That's grandfathered in.
Was approved and accepted, uh, by current code. Um, our variance, our variance to you would be, we're dropping you from eleven to four. So I would think when the new owner purchases it, you gotta go from before back up to eleven.
That was only my question, is that they're under two different variants.
You plan on selling it or something?
No, no, but I, what I'm saying is, my, my argu-, or, my justification is, is we already don't need code on our existing building right now.
But you don't have to.
And we don't have to.
You don't have to.
And, and if you grant us this variance, the people that buy the property from us down the road would be in the same, they would have to come to you with the difference. So it would be in our favor to, you know, help us out with the four stalls, since we already currently don't meet it with our, with our existing building, if we were planning on selling it, if that is a concern. Now, in terms of parking situations, I mean, I, like, like, like Dale was saying, I don't think that we're going to, um, assume on a regular basis the entire neighborhood with parking. We're only gonna have it at various times. And we would definitely stress to our members that, you know, utilize the parking lot and any adjoining parking lot that we can find or make agreements with, so that we can keep them off the street. And if they were on the street, it would be only for no more than, I would say, three to four hours, if that. So it's not an all-day, eight-hour day.
Another issue, I, I don't, I don't want to-
Thank you.
Tammy, I've got, I've got a question.
Hold on, hold on just a moment. Go ahead, Steve.
Um, doesn't the variance go with the land? So if it is agreed upon, and the variance says, all you need is twelve parking spaces, when that property sells, they, the, the, the new buyer is not gonna come in and has to satisfy new zoning requirements, or am I wrong?
Like, like Tammy said, uh, Chair Castellanos, it all depends how the conditions are written. So there was, um, discussion earlier that maybe a condition could be put on that the variance is approved for this business, but if a future buyer comes in, maybe they would have to meet the code for the parking, or put in additional parking, or reduce the size of the building, or somehow meet the code that the previous business did not have to. Um, but you're correct. Uh, just your standard variance, it runs with the land, goes from owner to owner, uh, with the land, unless there is a condition put in that would somehow change that, like from buyer to buyer.
Well, I mean, you know, something that the applicant should consider is if there is challenges with parking on that piece of property, it is gonna materially impact the value, your, the price you're gonna get to somebody to go in and buy it. Because, you know, the death nail of any business is no parking, you know? So that, that, that's a consideration. And then, the other question I have is, have you had an engineer, an architect relook at, uh, the configuration of the parking lot to see if, uh, you can get additional park spots in there? Because if we go back to a four hundred square foot of building area, you need a total of-
Seven.
Seven or eight now, I think it's- For the total for the, okay, I'm talking about for the total building, for all fifty-six-hundred-and-forty-seven square feet.
We're not taking into consideration the original building at this time, because it was approved and accepted at the four hundred square feet. So we're only looking at the additional twenty-six-hundred square feet.
Good.
But to answer your question, yes, we had it engineered. We just developed that parking lot. Well, we've, we started about a year ago, so we put the parking lot in first, but we had no intention of building that until our, until our fiduciary responsibility lent to us losing money, therefore, we thought, okay, then let's put that boardroom, so we can save a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we get a loan, we still, we still would be saving money until we pay that building off. But, so the engineers from Antique, or Mantica, we used, so that was totally engineered. We got the best bang for the buck. The problem is, the front of that new lot had a bunch of electrical they put in when they developed it. It was way too expensive to move that, so we couldn't have the egress or the ingress on that new lot. So basically, we, we did purchase that lot because it was an eyesore. That was the original, original why we purchased it, basically. And then Rich Tatum wanted to expand our parking lot, not to put a new building in, but it's just now that we've done it, we have a need to save, to make it more fiscally responsible now.
Can I ask what, if, if you didn't, uh, plan on putting another building in at the time, why did you put another parking lot in? Uh, it leads me to think you needed parking spaces.
No, we, we wanted to beautify the lot, basically. We wanted to develop the lot. He just wanted, we actually had to redo the blacktop. So we got a pretty good deal, actually, the blacktop, I, I believe it was gonna be like sixty thousand bucks to pu- to completely do the blacktop, blacktop. So it came in at seventy thousand. To tear all that out, just put, the Guevara's did it, just, uh, to put in the cement, which is a much better parking lot. We paid ten thousand dollars more, but you know what? Do everything. And we realized that now that we're building it, we did it back, I gotta watch you.
We, we get your-
You know what I'm talking about, okay, yes. So, 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 yes, so that, that, it wasn't the right decision, but we did it, we have to work with it, and, uh, it, we did it based on, uh, we got a pretty good deal. And I'm gonna just say one other thing. Oh, everything we've done, we've done contractors from Escalon, Norm Wilson from Escalon, Grassi did the electrical from Escalon, everything. When we, we get the chance to build this thing, the parking lot was Guevara's, they're from Escalon. We intend to use anybody, everybody that's in the Escalon area, and we've already proved, we've done that already. Talking too much?
Time's up.
I'm glad you're here, Dale. Normally, they pick on me for talking too much, so.
We still gotta talk about, uh, SCC. That's the, yeah, there's some issues right now with them.
Any other, uh, questions, staff? Okay, can I close the public hearing and bring it back?
Uh, this is Norman Wilson, can I talk, uh, add this thing in?
Excuse me?
Norm, there's Norm on the phone, yeah.
Is he on the phone?
Yes, he wants to talk.
Okay.
Can you hear me, Ar?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm remote also. Um, but, um, a couple points are that, uh, I think the, they say this is like that lot that they want to add the building on, you know, it was a very unique and landlocked, if you wanna call it that, piece of property. It's like forty-two hundred feet, has a forty-foot frontage, and as Dale pointed out, they can't even put a curb cut out there because there's so much electrical in front of it. So it really is, the only person or entity that could develop that lot was these people. It, it doesn't make sense. Nobody else would buy it. You couldn't get anything more than a thousand square foot building if you were lucky, and you couldn't get a curb cut then. You'd have to enter through CCO, CCSO. Uh, they don't have the opportunity to go behind them or to the north, because, or to the west, because Dollar Tree, you know, has all that property, and they won't talk to you, and they use it all for their standard. Uh, there was a question brought up about the, in lieu of fees, is what we call them, in lieu of fees for parking that you didn't have, that you paid to, that you took for other projects. Uh, that three hundred-foot circle, I'm sitting at home with my Google Earth on, goes all the way up to City Hall, and where you guys, the, the city rents out those empty spaces they don't use to RV spaces. I mean, so there's a lot of public parking that they can pay in lieu of fees on to compensate for what you want, if that's what the city would like to do. Um, the, uh, and, and I just wanted to point those items out for your consideration, that, uh, you know, it is sort of a very unique lot that was, that nobody really could develop other than these people. And they're doing a benefit to the city by trying to stay in town and make everything work for the city as best they can. But they just don't have any other place to put parking. I mean, it doesn't even, even if they didn't put a building there, you can't really get any parking in that forty-foot lot. It just doesn't, it's too narrow for anything else. So that's just, I just wanted to chime in on that.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Bring it back to the Commission for Discussion and a Vote. Ar, would you like to go first?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and start.
Go ahead, go ahead, Dan. Or Kurt?
It's, but I'll take that, uh, cast. Uh, Diana, uh, is it possible that after our parking, and I say after hours, uh, Escalon, uh, City Hall, after hours, uh, could be used for overflow parking for this project?
It's a possibility. It's not one that has been explored, uh, prior to this meeting, so I don't have a definitive answer for you. If that is the route that Planning Commission is thinking, um, it's something that we could look into. We'd have to continue this meeting, give staff time to look into that possibility, and how that would work, and how the conditions would be written, um, find out fees, talk with the applicant, and see if they, if the fees would be acceptable. We'd have to work some things out. I would recommend continuing the meeting, and then we would have some answers for the next meeting.
Well, this is Tammy. I would be concerned if they would utilize our parking spaces, 'cause our parking spaces are not the closest to their facility. It's the neighboring building that's the closest, and we don't own that building. So the parking spaces that are directly off of Ulray do not belong to the city. So, um, it wouldn't be really, so I would be concerned that we would be setting up for people to park in somebody else's parking lot.
Well, I, I, I'm looking for alternatives here, because I, I don't like to set precedent, as you know, through variances. And, and, you know, there, there's not gonna be any retractions on building design or, or combinations thereof. So, uh, we're on this horn of a dilemma of, you know, do we do this here? Do we get, grant special privilege to, uh, somebody here, or can we figure out another way to, to do this? And, uh, i- if, if the parking issue could be resolved with the across-the-street parking, I think that would be good for everybody. I don't know why I'm getting feedback.
Are you done, Kurt?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, when I was, I was running the library in the early nineties, and I didn't remember the name Tatum, but whoever was running CCSO would come over because they needed space to, to have ballots counted and things like that, when you were downtown. And, and as opposed to the earlier, uh, item on the agenda, here is a business that has proven itself, like you said, for twenty-nine years. You've grown, you needed a bigger space, and now you need an even bigger space. And, and that carries some weight with me. We want to be, we want to foster business, a, a distinct business. Um, I was not in prison, but I was in jail when I worked at the Sheriff Department.
Commissioner Willis, I've done jail and prisons.
Okay, okay.
You're on the female side, it's the male side.
Um, if, I talked to the per, the people who run the ambulance. They used to have more classes in their meeting room than they do now, CPR classes and whatnot. And when they had those classes, they would have people parked on the street. And I was told that ambulances coming out, they come, they don't come out loud and fast. They're, they're cognizant of cars parked on the street, so they didn't feel that any cars parked on the street would be a detriment. Um, and so I would feel the same for this. CCSO, if you have your cars parked on the street, and you're aware of where you are, it probably won't be a problem. It'll be seldom, and it won't be that many of cars.
Right across from us, right across from us, there's no impact with any, there's no neighbors involved.
No. And I was looking at the Dollar Tree spots and thinking, okay, there are four, I think, right there at the edge. But when the trucks come in for delivery, if somebody's parked there, they might not be able to back out because a truck would be in their way. So you, I ruled that out. And, and then like Tammy said, the, the parking spots at, um, that are near the, the health clinic, I, I don't know how we can set up an entity using some spots in our lot, and other people don't know about, and they park in those spots. You know, so I, I, I'm not sure that we can set up something like that. A- a- and, and as long as the, the, the fewer people at your job are going to stay that way, and it's not just COVID-related, that they're gonna build back up when this is over, to me, it seems like parking, uh, is adequate. Um, those are my thoughts.
It's permanent, by the way. He's made that permanent.
What's that?
The remote working from home.
Oh, okay, okay.
Any other comments, staff?
Uh, Diane, uh, is, is a variance the only way this can happen, or can this be a conditional use?
This would have to be a variance. Um, they will come back for site plan review for the building. And like we talked about earlier, that Exhibit F does have ways for parking to be reduced, but it wasn't a significant reduction for what they need, which is why they have to apply for the variance.
Okay.
Another thought. One thing that bugs me is when you have a huge parking lot, and it's never full, and the heat buildup from the asphalt and whatnot, I, 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 that really bothers me. And I, I realize the opposite is bad, to not have enough parking, but I don't want to, um, I, I don't see anything wrong with this. It seems like there's gonna be adequate parking for, for this use.
Commissioner Sarkozy, you or me?
Uh, go ahead.
So I'll, I'll be honest, I, when I did my homework prior to the meeting, I was like, no way, no way. And as I'm going through this, I, I'm really, I'm understanding it, and, and I think, um, I think what the applicant said is, is a point that we should really, and we can talk about this outside of this particular item, but the, the business world is shifting. I mean, the Dropbox, I don't know if you guys saw this or not yesterday, but Dropbox built a massive headquarters, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-square-feet, uh, facility in Mission Bay in San Francisco. They sold it yesterday for one-point-eight or two billion dollars because they just made a mandate that the, all of their workers now are going remote, completely. So they have no more need for a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-square-foot office building. So I think that's a little bit outside of our purview. I don't see us building a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-square-foot office building, but it is something to consider. Um, before I continue, I do have a question for staff. Is this a public parking lot?
Yeah, it's a public building.
So, if it's a public parking lot, and there isn't a quote-unquote lease agreement made, there's no reason why their membership can't park in a public, the public parking lot, correct? So, um, the only other thing is, uh, that I have to say about this issue is I, I really appreciate you guys taking the c- time and coming to us, following the procedures, and not actually having the addition built, and then coming for a variance. Um, 'cause that does nothing but frustrate all of us. So, um, I kind of second what Commissioner Willis said. I mean, you know, it's a sticky situation, because if the building ever sells, then what do we do? Uh, but I, I support, I support the variance.
So my question, on Olray, do we know the, the width of that? If, it's, it's actually a pretty wide street.
I don't have the exact dimension, but it is one of our wider streets.
Well, I actually, and I appreciate Commissioner Strowman's clarification and Tammy's about this being public parking because that eliminates the need for a lease agreement, if that's the case. Yeah, those are my only, only comments. Thanks.
I mean, a- and quite frankly, guys, right, wrong or indifferent, we're dealing with law enforcement. And there are a few bad apples out there, but I, I, I'm willing to go out on a limb and say that if there are issues and they happen to use this area as overflow and there is an issue that PD mentions, there, there's a certain brotherhood and sisterhood with law enforcement and it's just about doing the right thing. So those are just my thoughts.
Okay, then I have one last one. A few years ago, we had Presbyterian Church put in an auditorium or something to that effect. The, the parking requirement was a hundred parking spaces to which they had twenty-five. And a previous commissioner walked around the entire neighborhood, looked at Main Street Park, the Veterans Center, Hogan, and calculated that between all of that, there was a hundred parking spaces. I want to put the onus on the, the CSOS here and, and say that if we, that if we approve this variance, that any parking required beyond what they have right now, that they don't put it in the street, that they go to a, a public parking lot, whether it be City Hall or, or Police Department behind it because it sounds like you only need a couple of spots and then you, you ferry those people into your building. Is, is that a problem, Mr. Clayton?
No, it's not. It's not going to be a problem with us because we've already, not a problem with us because we've already downgraded our employees. They're not going to work. So we don't even need what we need now. So it's not a problem. So the problem's going to be if we sell it, and I already said a number of times, we've been here twenty-nine years, we're going to be here another twenty-nine years. So I don't see that being a problem either.
Well, the reason I say that is because this variance is going with the land and it's very difficult i- if that were to happen. I, I'm, I'm not thinking it's going to happen, but if it were to happen, the next people would be under the same requirement that if they were going to utilize that building, remodel, whatever, that if they needed more parking, they would ferry people in from other parking spots in the city and not put a burden on that street. Because we have no idea if, if somebody else were in that building, how many parking spots they'd actually need.
Yes, but-
You know, parking being a thing.
Yes, but let, let me, let me, I'm going to reiterate about that first floor. And that first floor is pretty much an open forum for basically meetings. If anybody wants to buy that and if they want to convert that into offices to bring more staff members in there, they have to come in front of you to get permits, to drop the electrical lines down, to put on their, put the, not so much offices, but the cubicles in there. They'll be seeing you. You guys could be making the, well, wait a minute here. I don't think you's, I mean, I, I'm thinking that's what you could do, so therefore-
You're making an argument you don't need to make.
What's that?
If, if, if all those spots that are existing now are all that you're ever going to need, then, then it wouldn't be a problem. But if you're going to need more than those parking spaces for any kind of activities now or future that you'd have to utilize city public parking and ferry in your, your members or whomever and, and not take up the city's street parking, is, is that doable for you?
Yes, I can guarantee that will not happen, except for the quarterly board meetings. That might be problematic for that night after hours. That's the only time that we would have that problem.
And perhaps because-
Four times a year.
Because you said fifteen approximately people attend the board meetings. Half of them staff, half out-of-town board members.
Yes.
Perhaps this local staff would be able to park in the city parking lot, leaving twelve spaces for the out-of-town people.
Yes, but I, I, again, I'm going to reiterate, reiterate, is that we are not asking for anything different than what the ambulance department does now. They have their board meetings after hours and someone said, yeah, they see the cars parked out in front and they're actually using our parking lot. So we're not asking for anything different than what they're doing, but we can do that. We can tell staff, don't park in the parking lot, come over here and park in here. That can be done, yes, very easily.
Okay, thank you.
So guys, if their maximum board meeting is roughly fifteen occupants, we're talking about four additional cars on Olray. And if Olray can't handle four additional cars, then that's a bigger issue that we got to deal with later on down the line.
And if it's twenty-five with the new building owner, Sean?
They'll have to figure that out later.
That's why you don't want to do it later. You, you, we're looking at a variance that runs with property and we're dealing right now with the current property owner. I like Mr. Clayton's willingness to, to look at these things here. And in the future, should they decide at that point to sell the building, the same requirement would be respons, would be levied on the new owner. That that's all the parking that they could put, you know, people in and if they wanted more, they'd have to use public parking, ferrying men. I think that's a workable solution.
I, I think, I, I, I just want to say one thing is that I think we have our credibility that we have always worked with the city, with the other organizations here. And even when Dominic mentioned about the city police department would probably need our help, we jumped on that. We were always first to do that. So you got our word that we're not somebody that, that just is not willing to help someone in need. But, and, and obviously it sounds like you're trying to help us, so we're going to do our best to do whatever we can to ensure what you're saying is that we're not going to be using any, any parking on the street if that's required. Yes, we'll ferry them over here.
Or any future tenant. Thank you.
Hey Tammy, I just have a, a quick question. So just for clarification of our constituents, what is the requirement for towing of vehicles inside a parking lot per se? Is there a specific signage that needs to be posted to reference Escalon Municipal Code or Vehicle Code Reference or? So let's say somebody parks and then, God forbid, one of their members park in the adjacent lot and they need that parking stall. Can they call PD and have that vehicle towed for any reason?
We don't, we don't tow from private parking lots.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's, it would be at the property owner's expense to tow that vehicle. But they should have some signage up saying that vehicle could be towed or for customers only or something. We have signs up in our parking lot about no overnight parking. And as of today, we just started designating some spots for staff because we've been having issues with, actually the medical facility parking over here, so.
I just see a whole bunch of parking on the other side of Dollar Tree. I've never seen that many people in Dollar Tree that utilized every single parking space at Dollar Tree, but you know.
And, and I mean, I totally agree with you, especially the four spots that Barbara brought up. And typically, when their delivery trucks are there, they're blocking the other side. That's the exit side typically. So I mean, yeah, I mean, you can't really say that those are spots that they can use. Would they be spots that somebody would go to use? Most likely.
Right.
Somebody's going to probably use them if, if they need to park, you know. But that's, that's a private parking lot, so it's not something you can count.
And it's out of our jurisdiction, so we can't comment on it, but there's what, one, two, three, five spots?
We are still trying to make contact with Dollar Tree, by the way, so we're not going to stop. So if we have that opportunity to purchase that lot and back, we're going to continue to do that. And if they ever reach out to you, because I know you reached out to them about cleaning that lot up and if you can get them to call us, we'd be happy to entertain that.
Yeah, the, the, the only thing, the only issue we would get is they usually hire third or fourth parties to do that and so they don't, they don't follow up either. But in, in response to that, to provide additional information on that parking area, I mean, that might actually be the way you get a hold of Dollar Tree. If it does become an issue and they notice somebody's parking in their parking lot, they might actually-
They may reach out to you.
Yeah, but that's typically what would end up happening. I mean, if it did ever become an issue and Dollar Tree staff or Dollar Tree somebody noticed somebody's parking in that area, the first place they're going to call is us because they're going to assume that we're the ones that can enforce it and then that we would let them know that it, it's, you know, private property and they need to put signs in and maybe that's what prompts where they're able to make some type of negotiation with them to be able to park in that area.
So they do have a right to get that vehicle towed in their property.
They do.
Can you park your car over there and see what happens?
Yeah, I mean, and I mean, and, and in experience as well, I mean, typically they aren't going to call in a car to be towed unless it's there for several days, maybe even weeks, because nobody wants to pay that expense.
Because it's going to be at the property owner's expense.
Yeah, they'd have to pay for it all.
Because most, most tow companies aren't going to tow and then wait for the owner to pay for it. You know, the owner of the vehicle. They're going to do it, they're going to want to be paid on the spot.
So I'm a planning commissioner. I'm not speaking as a representative of Dollar Tree. But just for the record, I will tell you that the staff at the Dollar Tree here in Escalon is probably the nicest Dollar Tree staff of any Dollar Tree. So it's like, hey, we got a meeting, we're going to park, we have four vehicles, I'd probably say, have fun.
Exactly. And I agree.
We'll reach out to them, we'll let them, hey, we're going to park right there, I hope it doesn't bother you.
Yeah.
We'll hear from them if it does.
Yeah, okay.
And, and I agree, they are very nice, but, but because Dollar Tree is so large, there's a, there's a definite disconnect between the staffing and corporate office.
Right, of course. Okay.
I've got one more question. So, you know, five minutes ago, I was saying, this is public parking. You know, they can use it, but so is street parking and they can use it. So unless that's, I, I mean, I'm having a hard time trying to say you have to park over here in this public parking for four cars or whatever and you can't park on Olray. That's unenforceable. So I, I'm, it, it seems, it seems like if they have overflow, they have as much right as anybody else to park on. If, if, if we grant this variance, that, and I know, I said, you know, take their word for it, that they would. But I, I don't know if, if I'm comfortable saying that they have to. They could park on the street if they needed to.
Any other comments from the commission? Nope. Well, I, I, I'm pulled in two different directions. I like the idea that we have a tremendous neighbor wanting to expand their business. I'm in a conflict on how to do that with the challenges of the lot and the parking requirements. So I want to ask the applicant, you know, Mr. Dangster referenced putting something in the condition of approval that you, you park on any public parking spaces. Do you have an issue with that? I'm, I'm just trying to figure out a, a way that it can be a win-win and not create a monster down the road. Unless you want to sign a, you know, you're going to stay in perpetuity and then we don't have to worry about anything.
I would be willing to do anything it takes to get it passed. We want to stay here. We want to be a good neighbor. We don't want to move to Sacramento. So if it takes something that we need to provide some type of a condition, we would be happy to do that. I know with our organization, we probably won't have to use any additional parking. So it would be, but are we going to, are we going to sell the property? Absolutely not. We're going to be here forever, but we'd be happy to do anything that's required to stay in town.
Well, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to figure out a way to do this, that.
Let's start with parking over at the Dollar Tree parking lot and let's see if they reach out to us. And if they reach out to us, then we'll tell them, we want to buy your lot over there.
So, Mr. Chair, my only concern about adding a condition to what Commissioner Danzinger suggested was that, let's say, they do get in touch with Dollar Tree and are able to add parking behind the building. Then, then what do we do? Then they have to come back and get rid of the variance and how does that whole process work? I think those are just, I'm just kind of thinking through this.
Well, well, if, 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 if they can supply adequate parking without using the public's, you know, the public spaces, doesn't the variance become a mute point? I don't, I don't know that, I don't know the answer to that question. Dominic or Tammy, do you have?
Yeah, yes, it would. You could formally have the variance removed, but it's not necessarily needed because it does become a mute point because you have provided adequate parking spaces. You don't need any special accommodation anymore. So if you didn't like it attached to your land, you could definitely come back to Planning Commission and, or apply to the city to have that variance removed because we've now met current requirements. Yeah, if they were, they do have a drive aisle, hmm, ten feet. The question is how do you get to the back once the building is expanded as far as it is?
What about the opposite side?
I don't have a dimension for how wide that is. Ten, fifteen feet?
I don't think we go from the backside. We'd have to get the easement and their parking lot going to it.
Oh, through Dollar Tree's parking lot over to the back? Or through Quality Service? To the back.
I don't think, that's not direct though.
Isn't there another property in between?
It's over to the left.
Oh, no, that is-
This is Quality Service.
Yeah, that is. The other property's up farther.
What did we do with the Presbyterian Church when they added their social hall? Did we encourage them to work it with Hogan or did we put some condition on the?
I think we worked the condition, but they got the agreement from Hogan.
That's correct.
I, I, I keep saying I'm not going to talk, but I have to keep talking. Look, guys, folks, if, if somebody, if they end up selling the property and somebody comes in here and they recognize, oh, well, we need, we're now going to build out where these, this boardroom is and we're going to put in offices, they're going to recognize real quick that they need to do something with the parking. And at that time, their architect or their engineer will come up with a plan how to mitigate this issue. And-
So you're saying not doing anything now?
Yeah, I mean, that's-
Well, and the condition, the second condition, if the project is modified, a variance amendment is required. So is, if we're okay with it the way it is now.
All right, so there's dead air, so I, I'm going to make a motion to approve the variance from eleven stalls to four stalls as per, as required per Section seventeen point five seven variances. I'd like to find the project sequel class thirty-two categorically exempt under Section fifteen three three two in-fill development and authorize staff to file the sequel notice of exemption and to approve the application with the conditions of approval as proposed below.
I second. A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. No.
Who said no?
For the record, do we have both Commissioner Danziger and Castellano saying no?
Yes.
Okay, so motion passes three, two.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Drive safe.
That, that, that one was a hard decision.
Do you mind if we take a five-minute break?
Oh, not at all.
Okay.
All right, let's see, uh, so I have, my clock says it's nine twenty-two?
Yes.
You wanna say we come back at nine thirty? Or do you wanna do it nine twenty-seven?
Nine twenty-seven.
Nine twenty-seven.
Okay, go.
You wanna mute it?
That's this one?
Yes.
That mutes everyone?
Are we off?
No, that just mutes us here in the building.
Yeah, like us.
Currently, the city has six flood insurance policies in force totaling $2 million in coverage. No insurance claims have been paid. Five of the policies are single-family residential homes and one policy is non-residential. In order for these policies to remain effective and for all Escalon residents to retain the ability to obtain flood insurance, if they're interested in it, the ordinance must be amended to propose or to reflect the updates provided by FEMA. Therefore, staff recommends making a recommendation to the Escalon City Council to adopt the ordinance amending Chapter 17.32 floodplain management overlay district. And if you have any questions, please let me know. And so there are comments that are identified in both red and green font. Well, actually, it looks like it's black in this printout, or the boxes. There's a comment box on the outside. So the, there are two sets of comments that essentially meet the same requirements. The FEMA representative advised us that the comments in red is what FEMA would recommend. And then what happened is FEMA has their regulations under the CFR, which is their titles of regulations, but they've also created a model ordinance that is more updated that they also apply. Same requirements, just the flood management or the model ordinance is just an updated version of what's being said in the CFR. So we've provided both of them. Either of them is sufficient. And what we're planning to do is let legal counsel decide which one they would recommend us putting into code. But we still wanted to bring it to Planning Commission because it is a part of Title 17. But either of them is the exact same thing, just worded a different way. So we'll let legal counsel decide on that.
So you want us to recommend it tonight even though legal counsel hasn't seen it yet?
They haven't, they haven't seen it yet. It's required to keep the program. So, so one or the other would need to be selected, which they're essentially the same, the same thing. Just one, one written by the FEMA representative, trying to update our ordinance the way she thinks it would be fitting. And then the same information provided in the ordinance.
But it's not like the community governing body, department, address, things like that aren't filled in?
Yeah, that stuff we would fill in, obviously. City of Escalon, yeah.
But you want us to recommend it without it being filled in?
Yeah, that would be fine. We would, we would fill in that information.
Even though I knew what would be in there, I was concerned I didn't want to recommend something that still needed to be completed.
No, no. Yeah. And actually, I thought I updated that in another version. So I might have given you a less updated version. I think I already had done that. But, but yeah, so it'd be City of Escalon Development Services Department, because that's who's currently handling all those items. And I can update it with that updated information to forward to them.
And Section 107.2, Planning Commission? And then 107.3, Planning Commission?
Yes. Yeah, it would be Planning Commission, anything zoning related. And they did, the biggest update of everything is the variance section. They had actually, and that alternative language meets the model code in that section. Yes. So that, some of the stuff is the same. It's just, it looks like it's in the beginning document where it changes.
And the very end, under 108.3, or insert specific reference to local code or regulations?
108.3, hold on one sec. And so that would be, probably be in, depending on what the circumstances, either building code or code enforcement. Yeah, because a notice of violation would come out of the code enforcement and a stop-work order would typically come out of building or red tagging building department.
Sorry, Chair, for jumping the gun.
And that's basically what this program is, is to be able to offer flood insurance to people in town who want to get it. If we didn't have the NFIP program or this ordinance in effect, people in town wouldn't be able to obtain flood insurance. So.
You're pretty much just rubber stamping this?
You are. Our flood, flood management information, when we did our zone update back in, I think it was like 2005, it was put into our zoning code. And so everything that gets changed in Title 17 always goes to Planning Commission first.
When was the last flood?
Nineteen ninety-six, I think.
Ninety-six?
No.
That was the last time it's.
There was a flood down, I remember hearing stories about Ricky Gibbs being out the streets flooding and out in her rubber boots and directing traffic and.
Yeah, before all the pumps were fixed and whatnot.
Yeah. But what, yeah, it was like a storm, I mean, it was a storm. It was the storm system not keeping up that was causing the flood more so than a natural flood.
And this is under public hearing, so you will want to open the public hearing in case any members want to speak.
I'll open up the public hearing. And is there any questions for, well, how about if there are any questions for staff from commission?
I'll go. Dominique, is any part of this, whether it's what you proposed or any other proposals changing the ordinance, going to affect the city finances or residential finances if they want to get flood insurance?
It is my understanding it has no financial impact.
Okay. And I want to think, I wanted to thank Barbara Willis for catching that scratch out there. I knew she would. I actually highlighted that. What would Barbara say?
So when you asked that question about financial impact, wouldn't it impact a resident wanted flood insurance? They wouldn't be able to if we don't do these changes?
Well, yeah, if we, if we don't make the changes to the, to the municipal code to reflect what FEMA wants in our municipal code, then they would not have the ability to, to get flood insurance. So in the event that there was a flood, they wouldn't be able to have insurance on it. So they would be out of anything that gets destroyed or damaged in that flood. But as far as an impact financially to the city for making these updates or, or obligating us to any type of financial obligation, there is none. For FEMA as well, in the event, because we have this NFIP program and we'd have our ordinance updated in the event that there was a natural disaster and the city was flooded, because our stuff is updated, if we did need to apply for FEMA for disaster assistance, because we have the program in effect and it's updated, we would, we should also be able to be covered to be, for assistance in that event.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, I will open up the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience or listening that would like to comment? Okay, we'll all close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission.
Chair Castellanos, I'd like to forward that we approve this ordinance update as per staff recommendations and forward it on to the city council.
I second.
Sarkozy seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carried, five zero.
Thank you, commission.
None.
Matters presented from the audience? Is there anybody in the audience?
Nope.
None.
I thought I see four bodies out there.
They're all gone now.
Staff communications?
So I just have a few updates. Lear Village, moving along, they have hired an interior designer and we met with them last week and they just advised us that they'll be updating the exterior colors to the buildings. So they, they're looking to try to blend it in more with the downtown and how the downtown is currently looking. And so they'll be going white buildings with black trim. So we're just providing that update because it is a project, you know, planned development that was before Planning Commission and council on a few different occasions. So we just wanted to give you that update. Any other large updates? Just, that's the biggest one so far. That's all we have.
Thank you. Any commission communications?
I'll go. Orlando's, are we doing anything? I've had several people ask.
Yeah, we received that, that one email advising that they'd be ready to submit in the next thirty to forty-five days. And it's been about sixty. So we can follow up and see where we're at. Actually, I did want to provide an update. We've been talking to council and, and obviously, I know everybody's probably aware that the council's main priority right now is, is senior housing, specifically affordable senior housing. Not necessarily deed restricted affordable, more affordable for the seniors that we have in town and the type of project that they're looking for. And staff and the mayor did have a conference call today with RHF, which is the Retirement Housing Foundation. They are the property owners and managers of Heritage House. And so we're opening that door, trying to see if, if a project can move forward in, in which they would be able to own and operate because Heritage House is, is a project in town that has been very successful. And, and we get a lot of comments about wanting them to expand and they have a waitlist and such. And so we've, we've opened that door and we're trying to move forward. It's obviously going to take a little while to get things going and see what direction we can move in. But that, that door's definitely been open and it looks very positive. It might just take a while because all projects do. So we were very pleased with that after, after our conference call today.
What about the Cleson's property? Is that?
That project is, is no longer moving forward. They did withdraw their, their project application.
I'm sorry, I missed, who withdrew?
The, the development project that came before council about a month ago or so for the eighteen unit, senior housing project, is no longer moving forward.
Okay. Another thing I would like to let everybody know is, the reason I'm not there is because my back has gone out on me. And my wife picked up my medication at Rite Aid tonight. And discussing the COVID vaccine shots, our Rite Aid has a tremendous amount of vaccines and nobody's wanting them. So if you know anybody, tell them to, tell them to make an appointment there because they've, they've got the vaccines available. And I just wanted everybody to know that.
Interesting. Thank you.
Good information.
Yeah, I'll go. That's interesting, Kurt, because actually I looked on the Rite Aid website today and filled in my right, it was not eligible. They didn't have, I mean, I can say that I'm, you know, in the educator type.
The website is absolutely terrible. And we've, we've tried, but if you go down there, I think they would take you in right away. That's what it sounded like. So, yeah, I would, I would utilize that if that's what you want to be doing. And, and I don't know how the Saturday inoculation worked out, Tammy. But, you know, maybe something out there that can help Rite Aid get the, the word out would be good.
Yeah, my daughter, daughter-in-law got a shot on Saturday and late in the afternoon and there was absolutely nobody there.
Yeah, so I can, I can give a little update on it. We did have some issues where all the appointments were filled. But we had a lot of people not showing up for their appointments. It was very disappointing for that to happen. I have my own thoughts on why it happened, but I don't have any concrete evidence. But I feel like maybe there was employers, human resource department made appointments and didn't either convey to employees, or employees didn't intend to get the vaccinations and so they didn't show up based on some observations during the day. We did give out three hundred and sixty-five vaccinations that day. And so we were able, they didn't open any additional vials. So there was one dose that I, I think it was one dose, if we wasted one, because right at the end, we were pulling people to finish out the, the remaining ones that had been, syringes that had been filled. So we did, we did vaccinate three hundred and sixty-five. So it was a long day. It went, well, I got there at eight in the morning for setup and it went till eight o'clock at night. So it was a long day and we'll be back there on the twenty-seventh for the second dose.
Hey, thanks, Tammy, and thanks for your staff's volunteerism.
I have a question. For those of us, I believe I'm one of the ones whose term is ending this year. I was online, I didn't see an application. Are you going to be sending those out or?
Yeah, those are going to come out on Wednesday.
Okay.
Is that tomorrow?
Yeah.
They will be coming out tomorrow.
Yes.
So how do you know when your term is ending?
Yes, it is our, it is Commissioner Willis, Commissioner Dan Ziger, and Commissioner Castellanos are the three expiring this year. So you will be emailed an application and it's going up on the website tomorrow in the advertisement in the newspaper or we'll put it on Facebook.
And also I.
Everything starts tomorrow.
They're, they're showing Commissioner Sarkozy as the chair. The, the website needs to be updated as far as.
Thank you.
Chair and vice chair and whatnot. I, I think Lear is looking really good, you know, I, shaping up.
And Mark, we kind of interrupted you. Did you have other items?
Oh, yeah, I was just gonna say I was surprised, pleasantly surprised to see a baseball backstop go up at Swanson Park. So that's nice to see that park activated a little bit. So I don't know if that was the recreation.
Yeah, so we included it in our budget. I, when we were doing the budget and with the way COVID was going and we just, we shot for three backstops. So we are doing Swanson, Edgewood, and Sanchez parks with backstops.
Good. Thank you for the, it looks, it looks great and I've already seen kids use it. It went up in one day, it seemed like.
Yeah, the fencing contractor was doing it. So, but ideal for practices and, yeah.
Yeah, so good. No, that's all I had.
Is, is the parking wreck going to be having baseball and stuff?
Yes, registration is open right now for baseball and softball. It closes on the fifteenth.
Okay.
It's a short window and definitely different than what we're accustomed to. Kids have to provide their own equipment. You know, all kinds of fun rules. They have to wear masks when they're not on the field playing and try to social distance in the dugout. Ha, ha, ha. They're going to probably have to, I mean, yeah. There's a lot of different things, like, so each kid needs their own helmet because you can't share that. They're recommending kids wear gloves because that helps with not transmitting it. So, different set of rules, but, you know, we can get the kids outside and get them some play. So that's the important part of it.
Yes, that is.
Anything else, Mark?
I was just thinking of the, there are going to be some football games. We've got two home games in April, but I think the first four are away. No, no tournament play as far as I know, but just.
Yeah, no, there's not supposed to be any end of season, like no playoffs, no big hoopla. So.
So, Mr. Chair, I have a, Mr. Chair, I have a couple items I would like to discuss. I'm sure Justin at Public Works and Tammy are all over this. But in case you're not, can we get in touch with Caltrans and tell them what a horrible job they did on 120 and their patch job is just falling apart?
Yeah, we've been reaching out to them for months now and trying to get some leverage there. We're even enlisting the assistance of Josh Harder's office at this time.
Where on 120?
All over.
All of it. So, yeah, so the, the pavement that they put down didn't cure correctly or something. There was something with the mixture. I, I could be totally off on this, but the original job was just so poor that if there was a pothole underneath, if you look at the crosswalk that's at Elizabeth and the highway there, you, on the edge of the road, the white stripe of the crosswalk has a little bow in it. And that is not the way that it was painted. The pavement is moving.
Oh.
That has caused that.
In particular, if you really want to see what a wonderful job they did, take a look at the lines in the center lane. Yes.
I wondered about that.
Yeah.
My son Declan's first grade class at Dent could probably put down lines better than those. Straighter lines than that.
I did see a Facebook post where somebody posted like a link to submit complaints to Caltrans on it too.
It's absolutely horrible.
Yeah, I know that we've been talking to the district director too about it. So I'm not sure where they're at. I know they've been out, they've inspected it. I don't know if they're trying to go back to the contractor that did it and make them do the repairs. I'm not sure where it is. I haven't talked to Justin recently about it. So.
It would be a really big help if, especially if the park opens up in the summertime and the traffic coming through. We don't want that to be a poor reflection of the city.
Sure.
So if Caltrans can get going on that, but they never do anything fast.
It'll do.
So one of the reasons that I was late this evening is if you go on the city's website, it shows that our meeting start time tonight was seven o'clock. And that's why I got confused even though I had this agenda at home. So can we just make sure that on the website it's advertised at six thirty?
Yes.
Okay. For us in attendance here in the go-to or in, in the chambers, is it possible to, for future meetings, to have the attendees bar listed so that we can see who's on part of the, like that?
Yeah, you can. It just covers part of the agenda.
Okay.
So.
Just want to like to see, plus gives me an opportunity to see Chair Castellanos' smiling face. So.
Well, I'm, I can see myself. I can't see you. I can see you from a distance.
Oh, we can see you. The.
I comb my hair for you.
Okay. Two more quick things, three more quick things. So back to our discussion with the parking applicant. Do we know what the driver was to change the requirement from four thou, four hundred gross square foot to two hundred and fifty?
No.
No.
Okay. That's something we may want to look at as, not right away, but as businesses change and business models change. Because there's a, like, for example, in Sacramento, right at I-5 and 80, that was the signature project. And, I mean, like Commissioner Willis said, their, most of their site is a giant asphalt parking lot. And they have two brand-new buildings that are just sitting vacant. And so we may want to consider that for future, looking at that particular parking lot requirement. Kind of similarly to what city manager Alcántara said, baseball and softball are about to kick off. So it's a little crazy, but I will tell you that all the kids I talked to, they wanted, they've all said how appreciative they are because it is a little bit abnormal. So, thank you. And last but not least, what happened to our clock?
Oh, you missed the beginning of the meeting. So I hosted the Escalon Lions Club speech contest in here last Thursday night. And when they give their speeches, they have a time limit of five minutes and they can't have a clock.
Oh.
And so we pulled it down for the, for the speech contest and we, I forgot to have Public Works put it back up. Sorry about that.
All right. I was like, where's the clock? And last but certainly not least, thank you, staff, for putting together a well-prepared agenda, a hundred and twenty-one pages of stuff. And we really appreciate all of your hard work, putting the presentation together.
Is the six thirty start time going to continue or just when the agenda's heavy?
We've been continuing it. And we know we need to make the change to the ordinance. I've been trying to research how to go about doing that because I haven't been able to find our Planning Commission times yet. They're not in the code. And so I've gone through resolutions and ordinances trying to see if we actually adopted it by time. And I haven't been able to locate anything yet. So it might just be where I end up just doing it by resolution and that be the document. But I was trying to find something in the background so that we could modify it or remove it. That way, we don't have multiple things. You typically, I'm trying to look for the word. If you adopt a, a new thing by ordinance, you rescind the last one or same thing with resolution repeal. And I haven't been able to find anything. So I think we're just going to have to start it from scratch. But yeah, the six thirty will be the new time. And we did get the soft, a soft agreeance from council on that. So we've been doing that too because we've been, we obviously last a long time. So we'll get it definitely in the books.
And then when I leave, the Planning Commission will go back to seven, seven thirty start.
Any other comments from staff?
Dominique, is there going to be a meeting next month?
At this time, we do not have any applications. So unless something sneaks in here this week, this week, no, we will not be having a meeting next month.
Okay. Well, thank you again, staff. You make our jobs much easier putting together such a complete package.
Absolutely.
It's, I don't envy your job. It's, it's got to be rough sometimes. You know, some of the decisions we made tonight, personally, I, I had, I was in conflict with just because. with, uh, just because, you know, the, uh, the sheriff's department or whatever that supervisory, I mean, they seem like really great citizens for the community, and I'm, I'm just concerned that if, or when the time comes that they vacate that building, it's going to be really hard to sell it, because, you know, there was a reason why that, that lot sat vacant for so long, it's, it's just difficult to develop, and I'm, I'm hoping that we're not going to be sorry for, uh, putting another development in town that has challenges with parking, uh, we think we have enough of those already. Anyway, um, if everybody's ready, I'd like to close the meeting, and, uh, uh, everybody have a, uh, a good, uh, Patrick's Day, and, um, if we don't meet before Easter, have a happy Easter to all, too, and stay safe, that's the important thing.
Stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good night.
Good night.